All right, we are recording. And we are live.
Okay, thank you Caitlin. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Newbury Board Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Rob Champetti. I'm the chairman. And for those of you who are just logging on, we're going to take a few moments and just allow, you know, a beat or two to go by while folks begin to log themselves on and trickle in and make sure that they get themselves situated so that we can begin our public hearing for this evening. The meeting date of November 23rd, 2021, it's seven o'clock. So that's our appointed and published time, and I'm going to go through our agenda. By the way, for those of you that are just logging on, or perhaps not familiar with a Zoom version, though I suspect almost everyone is by now, a Zoom version of a public hearing. All of our materials are available on the City of Newburyport's website. And there's a very easy to use online application process now with hyperlinks and PDF links to almost everything that we'll be making reference to. And we will also be posting and sharing screens of anything being referenced to or spoken of by either the applicant or during the application process. So if you're having trouble pulling documents up, don't worry about that. We'll have it up as well for you to follow along with. So without further ado, I'm going to begin this evening by calling our role, introducing our board members, establishing a quorum of who can vote, and that we have sufficient voting members in attendance. And then we'll get into our public hearings. And the first order of business will be to deal with two requests for continuance, so that anyone who might be here in connection with those applications will know early and quickly that they needn't stay on and just wait only to find out that the matter is being continued. So we'll go through the call of the role, and I'll ask members of the zoning board to please respond in your attendance by either saying here or I. Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Delisle? Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton?
Here.
Mr. Channen?
Yes.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Bennet?
Yes, here.
And I'm Rob Champetti. I'm also here. So that is six members, one, two, three, four, five, six members in attendance. And thank you all. That does establish a quorum. And just to go into the details, we require the zoning board, at least we have five voting members. And I'm going to go through for a moment, an introduction of the board, then walk everyone very quickly through a lay of the land of how the meeting will go forward. So that for those of you that might be new to a ZBA hearing, you'll understand exactly what the flow will be and what the process is. So just to begin and introduce the board, we have Mr. Mark Moore, our vice chairman, Mr. Stephen Delisle, our secretary, Mr. Ken Swanton, our member, Mr. Walter Channen, member, and also Mr. Gregory Bennet, associate member. And again, I'm Rob Champetti. So we have established a quorum. We've taken our roll call, and we'll go into our public hearings in just a moment. But to give you a lay of the land of how this meeting will go forward, we begin every meeting by reading the public legal notice. The legal notice is basically a brief description by myself of what was published on the butters list and what was published in the notice of the butters, as well as the application. It's a brief description of the property address, the applicant by name, and a description of the subject matter of what the applicant is seeking relief for in with respect to whether they're seeking a special permit or a special permit for nonconformities or a variance. I'll describe that just by briefly stating as much. And then a brief sort of narrative description of what the applicant seeks to do. After we read the public notice, I will invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to present the application. That's the first step of the process. The application will be presented by the applicant, or by the applicant's attorney, architect, or otherwise the representative. Upon the completion of that application process and any materials that are associated with it, which we'll of course put up on the shared screen, I'll then close that portion of the public hearing of the public hearing. And we will, at that point, take public comment. This is when we will open the hearing for public comment to for members of the public to offer their input. We will put up a slide which will just give you a little bit of the lay of the land on our public comment section of the public hearing. We ask that you kindly respect the courtesy of about a two minute interval. We do ask that you give your name and your address. And then you don't need to come down in the column of pro or con, for or against, you simply speak your mind. And this way, we can record your thoughts. We will then, at the end of that period, we'll close the public comment period portion of the public hearing. And we will go from quite, we will go to a section called questions from the board. This is when members of the ZBA will ask questions of the applicant, the applicant's representative, oftentimes a public comment itself. And if that public comment is posed in the form of a question, I'll ask members of the audience, please don't expect an answer from us in response. They'll know that we're absorbing that question. And you may very well hear part or parts of your question posed by a board member to the applicant, sort of an adapted way to take in that information and project it back out. So we can get to the bottom of that material. We will go through the questions from the board, after which we'll close that portion of the public hearing. And we go to deliberations. Deliberations is just the legal segment of this hearing process whereby you, as members of the public and ourselves and the applicant, all get to hear members of the ZBA think out loud and deliberate the legal criteria that must be met, the legal standards that must be met, whether we feel that they're met, or whether we have further questions. You'll hear that all be on pact, sort of in real time. Once we've completed our deliberations, we close that portion of the public hearing. And as chairman, I then sort of, I adapt an adapted version of Robert's Rules of Order. We will, I will then elicit a or invite a motion to be made by a member of the ZBA. And that motion is always going to be made in the affirmative. It will be a motion to approve. But rest assured, that doesn't mean that that member of the zoning board plans to support the application. It's really more of a procedural way to get the question onto the table for a vote. So the way that happens mechanically is a member of the ZBA will make a motion to approve, no matter how they feel about it. That motion must be seconded by another member. Once it's made and seconded, we take a vote. And in order for an applicant's application to be successful, they must have four votes in the affirmative. So that would be four yes votes. And just to point out, we have six voting members of the ZBA this evening in attendance. And I'm going to just list the voting members of the ZBA by application, notwithstanding the matters that are going to be continued, which is 65 Curzon Mill, we'll do in a moment, 1721 State Street, which we'll do in a moment. The first substantive application before us will be to Neptune Street. And when we get there, I will just, before I turn it over to Mr. Moore to continue to chair that hearing, I'll just cite that who our five voting members are. So at the beginning of each application, you'll know who the five legal voting members are for each application. So without further ado, I just want to also note that in attendance as well, from the from the planning office, we have, of course, Ms. Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, as well as Ms. Jennifer Blancher, our zoning codes enforcement officer, and Ms. Gretchen Joy, our keeper of the minutes. When you do speak, if you choose to speak in the public comment section, it is important to make sure you give your name and address again, so Ms. Joy can record your thoughts and your concerns or your support or what have you. And so with that, we will now get into our first matter on the public hearings, which is on our agenda. And it is, we have a motion to continue the application of Brendan Johnson and Christina Pearl Johnson on the application of 65 Curzon Mill Road. This is a dimensional variance. And do we have, I believe this has been continued once already from the meeting of 1026. And let's see, Caitlin, when are they looking to continue to?
Oh, hi, Chair. So the applicant is not expected to be present tonight. The request on the table right now is a request to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you. Okay. And my apologies. Okay. So the motion before us is a request to withdraw without prejudice. Do we have a motion from the members of the ZBA? We just need a motion from someone to withdraw without prejudice, seconded, and then we'll take it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion for 65 Curzon Mill Road to withdraw the application for the dimensional variance, application 2021-06, to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Motion's made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Swanton on the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice. Mr. Moore?
I've been recused on this application, so.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Channen?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes. It's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries. The matter of 65 Curzon Mill has been withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you. Moving to the next matter, it's Caswell Restaurant Group, Inc., care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC, 1721 State Street. It's an appeal, and it has been continued from 1012, 2021. And the request has been made to continue further. Attorney Mead, do you wish to be heard on the request, or just have us proceed on the written request?
Well, I, Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman, Costa, on behalf of the applicants, the Caswell Restaurant Group, we're requesting to continue to February 8th. I think the last meeting the board asked for more detail relative to that request. And I have submitted all of that in writing. So I'm happy to address any questions, but I think that the record does include that information.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. So the request before the board is a continuance to February 8th, 2022. Do we have a motion on the request?
So moved, Mr. Moore.
Greg Bennet, I will second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Motion's made and seconded on the motion to continue to February 8th, 2022. Calling the roll, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, thank you for providing the detail. And yes.
And Mr. Channen?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
And Rob Champetti, I vote yes as well. That's six in the affirmative. The eyes have it. The motion carries. Matters continue. Thank you. And thank you, Attorney Mead, for that detail as well. Moving now to the next matter, which I will be stepping down, just out of continuity of Chair, Mr. Moore will be continuing to chair the matter of two Neptune Street. Before I hand things over, I'm just going to note that based on our quorum, the voting members, the five voting members on this application will be Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Channen, and Mr. Bennet. And with that, I turn it over to Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chairman Champetti. So our first public hearing tonight is a application that's been continued several times, most recently from the ninth of this month. It's a Patty Ann Bampus to Neptune Street, 2021-26, special permit for nonconformities for an upward extension of a preexisting nonconforming structure by way of changing the roof line. This is the newest iteration of this application. And at this time, we will hear from applicant, Ms. Bampus.
Yes, good evening. My name is Patty Ann Bampus. This is a continuation of the application for the upward extension of two Neptune Street. After reviewing and listening to the concerns from Mr. Delisle and Mr. Swanton about visibility and massing in the past few meetings, and also concerns from the preservation trust members, I have really downsized the project to a point that I hope all, a point that I hope amenable to all. If we could go to the, I think, the first slide of the drawings, oh, I'm sorry. As a summary, the entire dormer has been removed from the plans. The size of the dormer was a big issue from multiple angles. And so I have removed it entirely from the drawings. Now it's an upward extension of the roof line that is resulting in a roof pitch change. For me, this will provide some usable ceiling height under the skylights, so that I can move and function and have storage on the second floor. If you could go to the first drawing. So the first drawing, as you can see in the revised drawings, the vertical dormer has been completely removed. What remains in essence is a roof line change by keeping the two and a half foot wall above the kitchen windows, which this wall was part of the last set of drawings, and framing from that point to the ridge line, the pitch changes from a 10 pitch to an eight and a half pitch. For reference, the front roof is a 14 pitch, which is steeper than a 45 degree angle. Keeping that two and a half foot wall will allow me greater ceiling height, mainly needed in the bathroom, to fully utilize the space. It will also help with increased linen storage and the ability to completely comply with building safety code. As I am losing three vertical windows that would have been part of the dormer, I added three skylights to bring light into the smaller, darker spaces. If we could go to the next slide. You can see that on SG 11. The ceiling is, even with the new ceiling, it's going to be too small to add hanging lights. All five of the skylights will provide light on the second floor. And I just have to make a correction. What you see on the lower right corner, it appears as if the two higher skylights are on the third floor. They're actually on the second floor. And it was mislabeled that they were attic skylights. All of those skylights, all five are for light on the second floor. The two on the left and the right would just be closer together. So I do apologize for that. I didn't catch that until today. Removing the dormer and pursuing a roof line change will preserve the long view of the roof driving down Water Street, which was a concern by several members. There is a dogwood tree visible in my neighbor's yard that softens the front corner of the roof. Even now, you can see it when you're driving down the street. So this roof line change is not a change that I anticipate to be highly visible, as in someone driving down won't notice it right off the bat. I spoke with the building commissioner about working on the roof so close to the street. And he indicated that I would get a sidewalk permit to temporarily close off the sidewalk while work was underway. The pictures that I have at the end of the presentation clearly show other homes also within close proximity to the street with recent work done. If we could just go to the next slide. This is the drawing from the other side, so the rear, what's considered the rear side of the house, as the property has two front yards. So you can see right now that the existing roof in the top drawing is above 2.5 Neptune. Then in the bottom, you can see that there is a change, but it's really not a marked change. It's very slight change in roof pitch. If we could go on to the next slide. So this is just showing the roof line change and what it looks like inside the bathroom. The green box is the area inside the bathroom where the height would be six foot eight, which is a requirement of the building safety code. That's why the 2.5 foot wall was maintained, just so that I can keep that on the left side of that bathroom window. The next slide, please. So what I included here, and there are three slides, is a table of approvals by the ZBA, which is a sampling of upward extensions approved by the board just across the city. So Plum Island, and then, you know, north, south, all areas of the city. Sheet one, which is the sheet, is approvals in 2021. And Sheets two and three are approvals in 2020. Several of the projects were on corner lots, had concerns from preservation trusts or other numbers, increased lot coverage, or were very close to the street. So I just tried to put this summary together to just show what my neighbors are doing, and actually what was reviewed, and what was approved by the board. If we could go down to the first picture. So these first two pictures are pictures of 249, 251 Water Street, which I believe was approved last year. A very highly visible location, dormers were put on both sides of the attic, which is a difference from the prior house structure. It's very close to the sidewalk. It's three feet from the sidewalk, and the lot coverage is intensified for this property. So this is, this is one of my neighbors that's currently doing work. If we can show the next slide, which is just the same building, just from the opposite angle. I was just walking and taking pictures. You can see they're doing a great job. I think they're doing it by themselves. The next slide, please. This is a picture of 159 Water Street, again, in a highly visible location. This is on, in an area where the driveway to go into the sewerage treatment plant is, it's right on the corner. And I included this because this has a second floor extension on the back half of the house. So if you look at that vertical beam in the middle, it was from that point backwards to increase head height. And this building sits actually right on the sidewalk. And you can see that from the next slide, if that's possible. They can see here, there's, this house has been undergoing work for quite a while. And it's just right on the sidewalk as they are doing their work. The next slide, please. This is an older property. Actually, it's new construction of an older property, 6 Bromfield Street. And this property had a demo delay. I think that this was approved in either 2018 or 19. This was an upward extension, and it also sits right on the sidewalk. The next slide, please. This is 8 Harrison Street. And this had a roof line change to accommodate the oversized windows on the third floor. I know that there was much discussion. I'm not sure if it was with the preservation trust or the historic commission about the nature of the windows and the size of windows, but the roof line was adjusted to accommodate these windows. So I have, these are just included as, you know, examples in my immediate neighborhood to show that have been approved. And I have done my best to listen to the concerns from the zoning board members that were voiced and make changes to answer those concerns, while also attempting to increase ceiling height and storage for 21st century living. You know, in reading the minutes of all of the approved special permit applications, it was mentioned more than once how applications satisfied the criteria for a special permit, that the project is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions, and no new nonconformity would be created. My house would continue to be a single family home. The footprint would not be expanded, and no new nonconformities would be created. So I am asking the board to please approve this modified extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bampus. With that, we will close that portion of the hearing and move to listening public comment. To recall from the from the opening preamble, we should all be very familiar with electronic raising of the hand. And when you're when you're called to speak and make comment, please remember to unmute yourself, your name and address before you start coming.
All right. Up first, we have Thomas Calderjohn.
Go right ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Thank you. Tom Calderjohn, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newbury Port Preservation Trust. The trust continues to oppose this proposal in the strongest terms possible. This building is a post and beam structure. The way post and beam framing works is that the entire frame, which is actually pegged together, is one piece, and could be figuratively picked up and moved anywhere. It is self-supporting and integral. All members of the frame rely on all the other members for structural strength. Reframing the roof to raise it will remove a large portion that gives it both strength and resistance to racking. Racking is when the structure is forced out of plum. It basically destroys the integrity of the frame and the purpose of post and beam construction. Most modern structural engineers are totally unfamiliar with historic houses and first period houses in particular. Getting a modern engineer's report is not going to solve this problem. The owner of the other part of this building is absolutely correct. His unit would be adversely impacted and also lose its structural integrity. He should not be forced to pay or deal with the applicant's desire for more space. Just imagine the impact riding or walking along Joppa when encountering this first period house if the roof were raised. It sits very close to the street and would have a negative impact on the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calderjohn. Who's up next?
I'm not seeing any other hands at this time, Chair.
All right, we'll give it a second.
No, here we go. Next up, we have Stephanie Nikotic.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, you know, I understand that in, that Tom Calderjohn was addressing something that the most immediate better, the person who has a shared wall unit in this house is concerned about. And he wrote a letter to you. So I just wanted to point that out to maybe to board members who had not had an opportunity to read that letter, because it just appeared to me anyway, this morning. So he is concerned about the structural problems that this project may create for his side of the building. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else either having called in or by name with a raised hand?
Yes, we have a caller beginning with 978, ending in 407.
Go right ahead.
Hello, this is Reg Bacon. Am I coming in loud and clear?
You sure are.
Oh, good. I'm at, I'm Reg Bacon at 21 Strong Street in Newburyport. This has been on my radar for the multiple continuations. And this meeting, I thought that I would only be contributing a lament to a building that's already been too far compromised, in my view. But at least I would say that the form, the shape of the building would have been preserved. In fact, if you look back at how salt box structures were originally, that originally came into being, they were not built that way originally. They were enlarged to accommodate changing needs. So I can almost see that, you know, see that this is a 21st century kind of adapt adaptation of a salt box. The form may be preserved with this present plan. But I'm also concerned that in 30 or 50 years, that, you know, newcomers to Newburyport will be really unable to discern an authentic building from a reproduction. I will say that future architectural historians may look at a building like this and all the other buildings that have these wart-like shed dormers, to be perfect examples of the bloated reimaginations of the early forms, but also evidence of our losing our architectural authenticity. With the letter from the owner from the other side of the building, it makes me think of the structural intrusion on the post and beam architecture to be an essential consideration. And the zoning board apparently has authority to call authority to call in an independent expert on 17th century post and beam construction. And I would urge the board to do that if it the, to do so. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Anyone else out there, Caitlin?
I don't see any new hands at this time, Chair.
All right, countdown. No new hands. All right, we'll close public comment and move on to questions from the board, beginning with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Bampus, um, we'll get right to the, the heart of the comments, I suppose. What, um, what sort of measures are, would you be taking if your construction were to move forward to alleviate the concerns of the, uh, of the shared wall neighbor?
You know, well, first I would have to get someone who would quote on it. I don't know how to evaluate something when it's inside the wall. So I don't know what we would be running into. I know that work has been done over the years. There are brackets that I have exposed that are, that are beautiful, that I've been told have been put in in the last hundred years or less. I mean, I would absolutely take recommendations of what you believe I should do, since I've never done this before. I could use some guidance on how to proceed evaluating.
Okay. How, how does this, you, you, in, when you're, during your presentation, you mentioned the, um, the, uh, the knee wall was, was, uh, first conceived of in the, the last iteration of the plan. So i- is it correct that this, this knee wall in this iteration goes the full width of the house as opposed to with the, in the last iteration, it was only under the dormer, but now it goes the full width of the house? Is that, is that right?
In the last set of drawings, the knee wall, if that's what I should be calling it, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Well, whatever you called it was fine. I, I'm not trying to insert new terms.
In the, in the last drawing, that knee wall was the entire length of the building. Um, and that was only put in because if I were to bring in the dormer at that point, three feet, six inches with the current slope, I wouldn't be able to qualify to meet building safety code. So it was in talking with the architect of, well, how, you know, how can I bring it in three, three feet, six inches and still meet the six foot, eight inch ceiling height requirement? And so we discussed bringing the wall up to change the roof pitch. So that was across the entire backside of the house in, in the last set of drawings. And so I just maintained that.
Okay, thank you. In the raising of the roof, is the existing roof going to be taken off entirely and thrown away and replaced with new material? Or how would that work?
I anticipate that yes, it will be entirely removed. But I don't think that I know a hundred percent for sure until that happens. The, the shingles are rotting and I, I do know, know that for a fact. Uh, there's quite a big sag in the roof. Although nothing is leaking, so I can't visualize what, what's happening. When the front of the house was redone to accommodate the solar panels, the pearles were removed and the pearles were really kind of dried up and they had shrunk and they were warped. So they really could not be used for anything because they were just mis- misshapen. I almost anticipate that that will be the same on this backside. Although if someone wants them for a museum or as a model or for research, I could certainly donate them.
Okay, um, I have no more questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now. Hello.
Hello.
Um, say Caitlin, I was wondering if you could, the, the letter has come up a couple of times, uh, that came in from the person on the other side of the house. I'm wondering if you could put it up for a moment because I had a question about it. Yeah, there it is. And particularly point one and two in the middle there. Um, I see, um, this letter came in from the person on the other side of the house saying they had two concerns. One was raising the wall facing town by three feet would meaningfully affect alter the light and our views to the water. I realize the benefit to this property of two Neptune. But this is to our detriment and may impact our property value accordingly. And number two has already been talked about, about the structure altering part of a 220 plus year old home structurally will have inevitable structural impact on the rest of the home. I view this as a risk to my own property. And it's not one I'm interested in managing or can afford to manage at this time. I, I guess my question to the applicant is have you, uh, when is the last time you've actually discussed your plans with the person who shares your structure with you? Because these are, you know, these are concerns that, you know, I think are important to discuss. Have you discussed this with him recently?
Uh, no, I have not. We have not, I've not really seen really, um, activity on the other side in the last year. They really have not been around. But I can say that in the beginning of 2020, they did support this project. And, um, on March 11th of 2020, Adam wrote to me saying, um, hi Patty Ann, happy to write a letter of support, but can you share the designs you had done so I can see what we are supporting? If we ever want to go through the same process, the work we do on our side should be fairly similar. Then on April 22nd, 2020, and worth saying, of course, but the impetus for this is my desire to support your plan with Desto, knowing that it meshes seamlessly with something fairly similar and reasonable on our side. Attic versus second floors in parentheses, as I expect it will. And then he proceeded to forward conceptual plans that they had done for a dormer with three windows out of their attic from the architect that provided my plans. So and then later, right before the Historic Commission meeting, he wanted to explain that he was withdrawing his support because it would subsequently reduce the view from their deck by 30%. And that they didn't plan to build a dormer on their side. So it's simply not in our best interest. So we haven't really talked about the dormer per se, because it, it seems though he was, he and, and the family were supporting me initially when it was a project that fit into their future project. And, um, since they decided not to pursue the dormer on their side, then they were not going to support, um, the building of my dormer on my side. At that point in time, he did not voice any structural concerns. It was more of a, a view issue that, that I would be impacting their view. Um, so they were supporting me when it was convenient. And now they're not supporting me because it's not convenient. The key is though, that they did have drawings done. And they were thinking about doing it. And they may do it in the future. I have no idea. I, I don't know where they stand on that. We do have a shared wall partially. It's really, I wish I almost had an overview drawing looking down on the property. The, the most of the shared wall is from the, just on the backside of the chimney moving forward. I don't think you could see that from the, um, the elevation drawing. It's most of shed, most of the L is not part of, of his property. So we might only be talking the middle of the house. The, the chimney is in the middle of the house. Maybe one or two feet on the backside of the chimney and then the rest of it is the front side. Yeah, I'm not sure if we've got another picture coming in from the deck. I think I only have an elevation picture that would help. And even that, I don't think shows where it intercepts. But, um, you know, just to go back to the, yeah. So that chimney and the hearth around it is actually huge. So you can see the chimney at the top, but the building out around it, because there are multiple flues. It's, it's much, much bigger. It's almost, boy, looking at this drawing, I would say, you know, a quarter of an inch of that gray shaded is at least a shared wall. Obviously it needs to be scaled up for real space, but that top window is in a very small room. There's a bookshelf right next to the chimney and there's a, there's an access space so that you can get in to the backside of the chimney. So that could definitely be resupplied with steel if necessary. I mean, this, that, that is something that would need to be really looked at. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Uh, well, I mean, I was basically just curious, you know, since we've received two letters from him, if you've talked to him about this recent idea and, and you answered the question. So thank you. Um, I, I, you know, I just wanted to also respond to your comments about, you know, the 15 other things we've approved this year. You know, I went down that list of all the things from this year and there were a lot of special permits. But there are none that I could find right on top of the street. So it's, it, it, to me, you know, I don't want to say you can't do something because some people say you have the oldest house in town. But on the other hand, the, the flip side isn't also appropriate where you should be able to do something because you have the only host, oldest house in town. So I, I just, I'm trying to treat them all very consistently. Uh, you know, I, I know you pointed to some houses like your neighbor across the street. But on Water Street, there's no change on the stuff right on Water Street. Um, so I, I, I don't, I hear you. I admire your persistence, uh, but I, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Uh, Mr. Tragman.
Uh, Chair, I've got no questions. Uh, I think the drawings, uh, speak clearly what the changes are. Uh, I understand them and, uh, and we can move on from there. I'm fine. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bennet.
I have no questions. We've plumbed this project, uh, quite deeply.
Uh, excellent. I will, um, I will take the, a moment to ask, um, one question. And it, um, Ms. Bampus, in addition to not having spoken to the immediate butter about the recent changes, I know early on in, in this application process with the first few iterations, which were dormer, you had a lot of neighborhood support. And I wondered if you'd gone back to those people with this latest iteration and if you had any feedback on that, because I didn't see any.
I did not go back individually to people and ask them because from the beginning, most people just appreciated the pure fact that the house is being worked on and loved and cared for. And anything that I had done up until that point, people loved. So most of the initial, uh, comments were, you know, I hope that you get it, you know, regardless of what size drawing is being presented. So I did not go back to anyone. Um, this would be a much, a much smaller scale, a much downsized vision of what I had. I'm, I'm really trying to please everyone as much as possible and just trying to live in the space, um, a little bit more in the 21st century with everyone else. So, I mean, I couldn't go back and ask my neighbors to resubmit letters if that was necessary. That would not be a problem or an inconvenience.
No, it's just, uh, no, thank you. I, I advanced. I just didn't know if you had and, uh, and that, that works for me. So I have no further questions and we will go, we will close that portion of the hearing and go to deliberations and we'll start out with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I think with regard to the latest iteration of the plan here, I still remain concerned about, you know, what the, what we're really doing here. Again, is it really vastly different than the first iteration of the plan with the very giant, dormer? Is this just a giant dormer that now spans the whole roof? I don't know. It's something that certainly, uh, changes the structure and not in a way that creates a new non-conformity, but creates the upward extension that we're here to, to consider. And in that regard, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? Well, we have to consider the factors, which are the size, scaling, massing, volume and location of the proposed extension or alteration uh, as compared to the existing structure and lot. That's the critical key for me here. And the existing structure is tricky because the existing structure is two living units. One person is in, you know, is proposing this and the other is against it, yet in comparing the, the structure, we have to consider the other side, the 2.5 Neptune Street. Because they're connected. So I, I think that that really is a problem, uh, for me as I, as I wrestle with this. And this is certainly something to wrestle with. I think that, you know, Ms. Bampus, you, as Mr. Swanton noted, uh, he commended you on your persistence and I would, I would do the same. And your creativity to, to get to a place to, to serve all, all purposes here. And for me, I'm just still, I'm still concerned about, uh, about the, the, the size, the scale and the massing. Uh, and those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton.
Um, I, I, I concur with Mr. Delisle. Uh, I think the problem here is this, the massing, the, the increase in height is, uh, we didn't see it tonight. I pulled up an old, uh, plot plan to check on at home here, but it's very, very, very close to the street. We're talking about going up. And, um, this is not something we generally do to go right on a busy street to go up. Um, and it's, I, I, I said earlier, I don't think we should make the exception just because some people think it's the oldest house in town. Uh, I, I, I think we should set that aside and just say, what do we do in general? Um, and then the fact that the person on the other side of the house has written us not one, but two letters now with a lot of concern about it. So I, 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 because of the massing in this example, um, I, I have, I can't support it as being, uh, something that we can approve.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Tragman.
Thank you, Chair. I, I can, I can certainly support this. I, I was actually in support of the dormer. And I appreciate the applicant, uh, listening to, uh, to the board over the last four or five meetings and, uh, you know, I, uh, kudos to her, I think, for, uh, for shrinking this down to what I guess I would have thought would have been, uh, would have been acceptable because most of the, uh, most of the discussions previously were on the fact that we had a massive change, this huge dormer. You don't put a dormer on a salt box. You don't put a dormer on, uh, you know, historical building. And, uh, this is essentially a, uh, roof pitch change of, with a 2.5 foot. Of with a 2.5 foot. Extension on the rear wall. Um, I, I, I would guess 90% of the people walking by this house wouldn't be able to tell. Uh, a, a few increased the height of the rear wall, two and a half feet. Um. So, so again, my hat's off to the applicant for making the change. Um, but I, I, I can support it as I could support the dormer. I can certainly support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chagrin. Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I. I, uh. It struck me that what was driving. Uh, the board's concern primarily at least. And the community's concern was the historic nature of the structure. Uh. I had a different view on that. Uh. I agree with uh Mr. Bacon who observed that this historic, this historic building has been. Uh, significantly compromised over the years and. Uh, with that in mind, I uh. As much as I re- respected the historic commission's observations, I found that the structure uh. Just did not have those historic values that would cause me. To uh reject the dormer project because I secondly found that. The massing and scaling is totally consistent with the neighborhood there. And the, and its relative size on the street. Again, is not uh. Out of proportion to that entire area. So we have this application, which in my view is much more consistent with the historic nature of a salt box. I don't think there's any standard pitch for a salt box. I haven't found anything in my. Anecdotal reading about architectural values and salt boxes. So. Uh, I think this is simply a uh. Uh, you know, an adaptation of a historic building to reflect what's going on in the 21st century. So, uh, and I applaud the applicant for her persistence in, in this regard. I uh. And I'll reiterate my views that I. Uh, do not believe that this structure is in any way uh inconsistent uh. With the scale and massing uh in the neighborhood in any way. In fact, it is much smaller than most of the hope uh structures there. Uh, I do have a concern and I think it's a legitimate concern that my colleagues raise regarding the neighbor. And. I'll make two observations. First, uh. I don't think the way the house is configured and the way the sun moves, I don't see any issue regarding. Well, let me, I don't see any issue regarding uh visibility to the water, the way the structure of the houses and the windows are in the existing house. As to the sun and the light, uh, I take the point that there is some, uh, there may be some marginal impact there. There is virtually no project that we deal with. Uh, which does not have some impact on those. And uh. Uh, I don't view those as being compelling considerations unless there is a detailed shadow analysis showing how it's going to genuinely affect. The community and the neighbors. Then I get to the point of the structural integrity and the issues regarding that, which are significant in my view. And uh. I, I, I will ask this of my colleagues. I mean, I, I assume that these, that, well. I would have assumed had this passed that there would be some review of those plans by the building inspector here. Uh, or some way to, to have a check and balance on what I perceive to be a significant issue, although the anecdotal comments here don't, don't convince me. Uh, in any way uh that this project couldn't be undertaken safely. Uh, so with those comments, uh. I, I stand where I was before. This project is, is more consistent with issues that I view to be critical to this application and I would approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Um, I'm, I'm going to dovetail off of my colleague, Mr. Bennet, and in saying that. And trying to skip the, some of the points he made as well as Mr. Chagrin and with all due respect to colleagues who have had concerns, uh legitimate concerns. I, I can't riff this, so I wrote it down, so I'll have to read this. Uh, first of all, I think we all appreciate the time and persistence and investment uh that, that the applicant has put into this, um, this process and trying to get this. Living space uh improved in her mind. What I see here is that we have an historic, uh, first generation home. That some would like to see unaltered to preserve its um historic form and appearance. The applicant's gone through the process. Of, of delay. In order to get to this point and, and present plans that she'd like to work with. So I thought, well, let me look at the ordinance specific to this demo delay. And uh, taking some quotes and paraphrasing some. Um, it, it was crafted to acknowledge and work to preserve whenever possible, the architectural, cultural and economic history of New Report. As it's been seen as one of its most valued assets, and I think we can all agree there. Um, later it goes on to say the preservation, rehabilitation and enhancement of the city's historic character is critical to the preservation of the city's heritage and land values. Again, I don't think anyone would argue that. However, in looking at 28E number one. Of the, of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to the demo delay process, uh, it states that, quote, "The section is not intended to regulate the mere alteration of a historic building or structure." Even if the alteration involves a, the demolition of character-defining exterior architectural features. So. When I saw that, I thought, well, that. Since a lot of the concerns have been about the architectural feature of the salt box roof. Um, I, like my colleagues, saw this removal of the dormer portion in keeping with the historic nature of. That. Architectural defining exterior uh that we're trying to preserve, albeit there is a bump up with the wall. So if it's, if the architectural restriction. Is removed from my thought process, then I'm just looking at size and massing and scale and I won't reiterate what some of my colleagues said, but I. I don't see that bump up. When you look at. The neighborhood. Uh, the bump up in the wall and the size of. That, uh, and the impact of that roofline change, I don't see that being substantially more detrimental. When you look at the neighborhood, there are many taller buildings, many dormers that I don't think were original. Uh, and we have established. In prior meetings that this is a private home. It's, it's had changes to it with, you know, solar panels, windows haven't been historically preserved, doors haven't added. So in that respect, you know, maybe I think preserving the roofline, uh, as Mr. Bennet said is. Is a nice way to try to go about appeasing everybody here. And I acknowledge that the immediate neighbor is the most affected uh by the change, and I do agree that. There are some real legitimate concerns. About the interaction of the two buildings and the construction and it, I think it would have been. I think we can all agree it would have been helpful to have a structural engineer to, to ask these questions, but these concerns. Would obviously have to be addressed uh if this was to move forward. Long way of saying I, I too can support it, but unfortunately the math doesn't work that way with this. Right now, um, there would have to be four. To approve this and uh, and we only have three. So. Given that this is the sixth iteration, I think, of trying to get this done and we're at the end of November. Um, and the applicants on the approval clock, the demo delay, which would end in the 19th of February, I believe. Um, I, I just wanted to. Um, before moving from this. Uh, situation, uh, closing deliberations and then moving towards. Uh, a vote or presenting another option to the applicant. After hearing. That since uh, Mr. Lyle, Mr. Swan, you went first. I just wanted to ask you if anything that you've heard from your, from the board. Subsequent to that has had any impact on your decision-making process and, and if so, how and if not. If you, if you had any further comment, um, love to hear it. Uh, Mr. Delisle.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moore.
Sure.
I, I think that the, uh, the comments of, of. The other three members, uh. Were persuasive and also uh, w- well-stated. Um. But I, at this point, I'm still, uh, I still have grave concerns and um, despite the uh. The well-stated sentiments of, of the three members in support of the application, um. My, in my opinion, has not been, uh, been moved.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. And this is not to say that shouldn't have said that your opinion wasn't well-stated as well as Mr. Swanton's. Um, we just want to get the circle back before we go to the next level. So, Mr. Swan, would you like to comment? With unmuting though.
Uh, thank you. Now, I appreciate everybody's uh comments. Um. And uh, but I, I think Mr. Delisle said it well. I, I'm still. Kind of where I was and um. I, I'm. Still not in support of this proposal.
Okay, fair enough. And that's what makes a board. Um, so with that, um, Ms. Pampos, it, it, as has been the case with the others, it's clear that. This application still doesn't have uh enough support with the board. And I don't know that a further continuance. Is going to get the job done before your clock runs out in mid-February since it's almost December or it will be December as far as the calendar goes. So.
So I do have a question for you, Chairman Moore.
Sure.
If, if I withdraw without prejudice. Does that mean that I um? With new designs, do I start back with the historic commission? Or do I start back with ZBA? How does that?
If you withdraw without prejudice, um, I think the answer is not going to be as simple as I would like it to be. Um, I'm going to take a first crack at it and then see if I, if I need help here. Um, if you withdraw without prejudice, you still would have till the 19th. To have a building permit. From the ZBA. That would entail getting a lot done before then. To get into. Uh, the queue to have the meeting to then say, you know, yea or nay. So um, without prejudice. It's definitely, it's definitely an option and it probably makes sense given the timing of it. Um, if you could somehow get something done in our, in our hurry and get back on to. The agenda in time to have a building permit in place by the 19th. Then you wouldn't have to go back to historic, but if, and unfortunately, I think it would be very difficult to do and, and that's the case, then it, it goes back to the original way where it goes back to historic. Is that, I, I'm just going to ask, um, Caitlin. Or Jennifer Blanchet who's listening, does that make sense? Have I misstated that in any way that it's best we can? Describe this.
Hi Chair, it's Caitlin. That is my understanding. Jennifer, do you agree?
Yes, we, we have investigated this and it, it is our understanding um that the time does expire. On that demo delay, the six-month time period, there was some question and evaluation as to whether or not. That was ex- uh, continued as because of the stay of uh COVID. Um, but where that was not a permit, it was a delay. It was not believed to have fallen under that protection. That would be um. So in fact, the, the clock for demo delay would, it is our understanding that it expires on the 19th and it would have to begin again with a brand-new demo delay application. Uh, I don't. So I, I don't see any benefit to. Uh, withdrawing without prejudice with the intent to resubmit to the ZBA. Uh, they're, they're just, there isn't time and like the chair had said. Uh, it, it would seem to have to take an entirely different project to convince those that are. Uh, not able to vote in favor at this point.
Well, the result would be the same if, if, if she withdraws without prejudice or we go to a formal vote and it's no. I mean, the, the. The process would be the same for her. It would, you'd end up back in front of historic of, or the demo delay process would, would have.
Yes, from a demo delay process, that would still be the same result. The only difference would be that. She could return to you, the ZBA, with a similar proposal within a shorter time period. Should she desire, if she withdraws without prejudice. If the project is denied this evening, then there is a, uh, de-. A period of time with which she cannot come, she or anyone cannot come back to the board without a substantially different proposal.
Thank you. So, Miss Pampos, it appears that, I mean, the best option, and again, I. It would, it's going to be a long shot would be to withdraw without prejudice versus going to a denial. Which would certainly um seal, seal the deal. Um, I, I, without prejudice option would at least give you um a slim chance to, to maybe get something together in time.
Okay, so um, our roofline change would still go through historic commission first. Yet go through the demo delay and then go to the ZBA.
If you didn't get, if, if something wasn't back in front of us and um.
Right.
And approved before the 19th, yes.
Okay, I guess. Without guidance, I guess my best option is asking for a withdrawal without prejudice. So that I can. Try to figure something out.
Um, then that's, I'm, that's the best guidance that, that I could give you without making the final vote tonight and then, and then sealing your fate for two years.
Okay. That's what I would like to formally request then.
Okay. So we have um a request by the applicant to withdraw this application without prejudice. Do we have a motion?
Greg Bennet, I will so move.
Bud Shaggin, I'll second it.
All right, with the motion to um withdraw our prejudice made by Mr. Bennet, second by Mr. Chagrin, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that's all, uh, yes. Nationally approved, this application is withdrawn without prejudice. Thank you, Ms. Pampos.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, with that. I will be handling, uh, handing the virtual gavel back to our esteemed Chair, Mr. Chanty.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and continuing where we left off on the next matter uh on our public hearing list this evening is the application of 2224 Olive Street LLC care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellerman. And Costa LLC. The address is 2224 Olive Street. Uh, this matter was continued from the meeting of November 9th, 2021, but no, um, no testimony was taken and the. Application was not formally commenced, so we commence it uh in its, uh, sort of in its initial form this evening if we're to go forward. Uh, this is the Docket 2021 dash. Forty-four special permit for non-conformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits uh required to remove an addition uh on the rear of the structure and construct. A new addition in its place. And for the record, the five voting members on this application will be myself, uh, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton and Mr. Chagrin. Uh, with that, um, I will, oh, and I want to point out also, and this is just procedural uh history, the application uh was um, uh, this, this property did go before the Newbury Port Historic Commission. Uh, on a demolition delay application, and I believe that was originally before the Historic Commission on July 22nd, 2021. The uh, the NHC invoked demolition delay uh at the most recent um meeting of October 28th, 2021. Uh, with revised plans and details that the Historic Commission, uh, though a split board, um, ultimately voted for, uh, yes, to no, to lift the demolition delay. That is the set of plans that are before us as well uh this evening. So with that, uh, may we hear from the applicant. I believe we have Attorney Mead uh presenting as well as uh Mr. Ernie DeMayo, uh, Attorney Mead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. And for the record, Lisa Mead made tell him in Costa on 30 Green Street in New Report. And as the Chair noted, um, we do have with us this evening, uh, Ernie DeMayo of um Tech Architects. Also with me is John Sarkis, who's the manager of 22 to 24 Olive Street LLC, who is my client and the owner of this property. As the Chair noted, you go to the next slide, please. We're here for a modification to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The property is located in the R2 zoning district. It has a two-family use and is a pre-existing non-conforming lot for lot area. Secondary front setback and rear setback and just to. secondary front setback and rear setback. And just to orient the board of this project, and you'll see in a little bit, is on the corner of Olive Street and Russia Street, Russia Street having the largest frontage. And so Russia Street is actually the front yard primary in the yard opposite that is the rear yard. The R two district requires fifteen thousand square feet for a two-family. The property includes ten thousand seven hundred fifty-eight square feet of area. The secondary front setback is required to be twenty-five feet and the property includes ten point six feet on Olive Street, which is the technical front of the house. The rear or opposite of Russia Street has required to have a setback of twenty-five feet and the property includes sixteen point five feet. There are currently two parking spaces on the property and in the existing condition, you are supposed to have four. The DCOD is not triggered because they're removing less than twenty-five percent of the existing walls. However, as the Chair noted, the applicant has been before for several months, the Historic Commission and the Historic Commission did approve the revised plans that the board has before it this evening and has had for about a month. The Historic Commission also did a site visit as part of their work on this project. Next slide, please. So what I'd like to do is kind of walk the the board around the house before I go into this a little bit more and turn it over to Ernie. But here are the existing conditions of the house. So you see the Russia Street elevation on the left top corner, the Olive Street elevation on the right top corner, and then the existing north elevation on the bottom left. That's adjacent to the the only neighbor there on Olive Street. And then the rear elevation, which you see if you were traveling south on or east, excuse me, on Russia Street. Next slide, please. And here is a photo of the corner of Olive and Russia Street. You'll note that this house has a hip roof, no third floor, which makes it actually smaller, at least in stature, than several of the surrounding homes, not the not the least of which is the two immediately adjacent to it, which both have gable ends and third floor space. I don't know if that's living space or not on those units, but in fact, you can see that this kind of sits on the corner of Olive Street and with the hip roof, it does perform in a shorter manner, so to speak. Next slide, please. And this is if you're traveling east on Russia Street. You'll see that there's that building right now that we're proposing to take down, which is a workshop. Once that building is taken down, you'll actually be able to see more of the exposed rear of the house or side yard of the house and the original structure. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute, too. But that building is proposed to be taken down and actually, the the historic structure will stand more proud on the property as a result of that. Next slide, please. And then here's coming up Olive Street towards High Street. You can just see another view. Next slide, please. And here's the rear yard. This is a, this is an older addition, the one that was more original to the structure. But in addition, nonetheless, next slide, please. And then you can see both additions on the back. Those will both be proposed to be removed and more of that exterior wall reexposed, including a couple of original openings. Next slide, please. And then this is the newer side of the addition that exists. I'll just note here for a minute that once these come down, the new addition is proposed to be actually set in much further from the the sidewalls than the proposed than the existing conditions. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the proposal is to remove the later added rear additions. As I noted, we worked extensively with the Historic Commission and received their release of the demo delay at their October twenty-eighth meeting. The addition creates no new nonconformities, nor does it extend or exacerbate any existing nonconformities. The addition is more than five hundred square feet, and that is why we are before the board. It improves the current site conditions. The proposed, the site will have five parking spaces where four are required and it currently has two. The primary set front setback off of Russia Street will be improved and the lot coverage will decrease from twenty-four point seven percent to twenty-four point five percent. Next slide, please. And I think you can really just, if you could blow up the actual footprint a little bit, Caitlin, if you wouldn't mind. So the darker line is the addition in this instance. Thank you very much. So you can see the lighter hash lines of the existing additions are going to be removed and the proposed new addition, which is obviously smaller in footprint, including width than the existing home will be added within all of the setbacks. You can see that from the technical rear setback, it's twenty-nine point six feet, where twenty-five feet are required and certainly further away than the existing addition. It's thirty feet from the right side, which is technically a side yard. And then you can see that it's a little over twenty-six feet off of Russia Street, which is an improvement of the current setback, as you can see, which is twenty-five point one feet. So I I think that this site plan helps orient everybody where the proposed addition will go. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ernie, who is going to walk through the architectural plans.
Thank you, Lisa. My name is Ernest D'Amelio. I'm the owner of Tektonics Architects in Salem. We're the architects for the project. Here we can see the proposed south and east elevations of the project. The south elevation above represents a view, a flat on view of the building along Russia Street. The original eighteen thirties building is to the right. We're connecting to that building with what the Secretary of the Interior refers to as a hyphen. And then we have the 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 bulk of the addition is to the left, which has been expressed as contrasting brick in the elevation. The hyphen connector to the original building is set lower in height than the existing historic roof. We lowered the floor elevations of the addition such that we could tuck the new roof of the hyphen below the existing roof lines, so we're not overlaying the historic roof. And there's a single door on Russia Street, which enters a common vestibule, which exits to the left and to the right into entry foyers, mudroom spaces for each of the units. Unit one, which is in the brick structure is to the left and the original historic building enters to the right. The space on the second floor of the hyphen is actually dedicated to the brick unit on the left. Architecturally, we treated it similar to the first floor so that the hyphen was accentuated and the and the connection was clear between the original building and the addition, which is making it visually separate from the original structure, which is an important point in the Secretary of the Interior guidelines, not to have a unification of the entire structure as a whole, but rather than to treat them as separate expressions architecturally. The hyphen, the use of the hyphen is consistent with some of the examples given in the Secretary of the Interior. And we believe we've done well to keep our roof below the existing historic roof line. The elevation below of the east elevation on Olive Street shows no substantial change. There are brick chimneys that you can see on the original building that are existing. The brick chimneys that are closest to Olive Street will be will remain there in good condition. The chimneys that are closer to the addition will be reconstructed to match the original chimneys because they're in a state of disrepair and they're structurally unsound. Next slide, please. The two views that you see here, the north elevation is the upper elevation. This is the elevation we're facing or a budding neighbor at twenty Olive. And the elevation below is the west, what we're calling the west elevation, which is the view that you might see driving along Russia Street, coming down the street, the the narrow facade facing towards our, what would be our side yard and the upper elevation facing towards what would be our rear yard. You can see in our profile photo to the right of the actual images, how the how the addition sits virtually centered on the lot. So most of the mass occupies the very center of the lot with a substantial amount of open space surrounding all three sides of the addition. The windows of the addition closest to our our neighbor at six Russia Street pick up on the window patterning from the original building. And then as we move around towards what is the backside of the addition, the windows are more related to the interior functions, which are more service oriented on this side of the building. Lisa alluded to the fact that this portion of the building is set back significantly further than the existing one-story additions that we're removing. We're actually setting the building back an additional nearly twelve feet, slightly more than twelve feet from twenty Olive Street. Next slide, please. This is a view along Olive Street, and you can see in the very background on the right side, a portion of the addition peeking out through the space between twenty Olive and our unit. There's a very brief window where the building would be observed from Olive Street. But it's not the entire facade of the addition. It's mainly the far right side body of the addition that would be seen. The actual hyphen would not be seen from Olive Street from any of any public vantage points. Next slide, please. This is a view from the opposite side of the street in front of, let's say, twenty-nine Olive Street, looking towards the corner of Olive and Russia. You can see our addition in the background and the historic eighteen thirties building in the foreground. Our connector is set back from the from Russia Street far enough that from this vantage point, you can't even see the facade of the hyphen from this vantage point. In fact, the brick facade is also set back from the historic facade. So every facade on the addition is set back from the original building, which is set proud as as we intended to celebrate. Next slide, please. This is a view from Russia Street, looking back towards Olive Street, if you will. You can see our addition in the foreground window, details and patterning of similar rhythm to the original building. Then we have our hyphen, which separates the two masses, the two windows that appear on the return in the shadow on the existing eighteen thirties building. One of those windows, the first floor window, is currently concealed within a wall in the existing building, and we're going to restore that window as part of this work. In fact, as just as a point of reference, the existing one-story additions cover approximately sixty-two percent of that west facade of the historic building, which is fairly substantial. And the addition that we're proposing with the hyphen covers that rear facade approximately thirty-five percent. So we're exposing an additional two hundred fifty seven square feet of historic original facade and claiming two more historic windows that have been covered up by previous additions. So we're covering less of the facade. We're setting the addition back further. And this will actually enhance the views of the original building. As you can see, the roof line of the addition is set lower. The ridge of the addition is set significantly lower, almost eight feet lower than the existing building, which, as Lisa mentioned, you can see the roof line of twenty Olive peeking out from above our addition. The roof line of twenty Olive is substantially taller than even the original eighteen thirties building. And we're seven feet lower than that. Next slide, please. This is the aerial view of the site that I alluded to. As as mentioned, the addition confines itself towards the center of the lot, giving back much of the open space that's been created. Interestingly, the present lot coverage on the site has been reduced in the final build out. Presently, the existing lot has a lot coverage of twenty-four point seven percent. That includes the one-story buildings and the workshop, which we are demolishing. And we're proposing a lot coverage of twenty-four point five percent. So not only are we moving the built form further away from our neighbors and from the street, but we're also actually reducing the total amount of lot coverage with the build out. The existing workshop is set back from Russia Street approximately seven point eight feet. The closest point of our addition to Russia Street will now be twenty-six point three feet. So that's nearly a twenty-foot further setback than structure that exists currently. And relative to six Russia Street, which is the abutter to the left in destroying, we're increasing the setback to building structure from five feet to thirty feet. So we're giving back a fair amount of open space and air to our abutting neighbors and to the streets with the approach that we're taking. We're also, as I mentioned, increasing the distance between any structure on the backside of this building to twenty Olive Street from seventeen feet to twenty-nine point six feet. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, this this view is really just to show what the trees in their actual fullness are. The previous slide faded the trees so that you could actually see the open space and the built form that we were proposing. This shows the trees more realistically to what they are so that you can get a feel for how the masses relate to the streetscape. Next slide, please. This slide is basically informational. It gives all the dimensions of the footprint of the existing building and the proposed addition. I think important to Lisa's comments is how the setback lines, which are the diagonals closest to the building, and in the case of the original building, cutting through the building, shows how we respect all the existing required front setback, rear setback, side yard setback, overall lot coverage, building height, so forth. We're not creating any new nonconformities and we're not extending any existing nonconformities. Next slide, please.
So I think with that, Ernie, I'll take it back for a little bit, okay? All right. So thank you very much. So I'm going to run through the special permit criteria. As Ernie and I have said ad nauseam now that we will not be creating any new nonconformities, nor will we be exacerbating any existing nonconformities. So the first criteria, of course, under section nine, is that there will be no new nonconformities created, and here there will be none. The next is that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming structure or use. Here, as we have said, the proposed addition is smaller in footprint and overall square footage and height than the existing structure is. The lot has sufficient size as compared to neighboring lots to accommodate the proposed addition. Also, the proposed to to remove the two additions that were not appropriate to the original historic structure and to reexpose a significant portion of that rear of that structure and move the additions away from both the rear and the side lot line. The proposal also, as I noted, removes the nonconforming workshop and removes existing additions and exposes the windows as well as the brick on the property. Next slide, please. Additionally, the proposed modifications are appropriate to the scale, massing, and architectural style of the existing home. As Ernie pointed out, if you compare the density of the As Ernie pointed out, if you compare the density of the property as proposed, it's in the middle to the less dense side of other properties in the neighborhood on a comparative basis. The lot is the only corner lot on Olive Street with complying primary setbacks. That is off of the Russia Street side. The lot has an open feel around all sides, as Ernie has said. And the proposed addition, especially on Russia Street portion, as well as having low lot coverage for this neighborhood due to its remaining space and dimensional conformities. Further, the the proposals compliant with the Secretary of the Interior standards. Before I go into that, I would just tell you, because I know the board's going to ask this momentarily anyway. The total square footage of all new construction is 1,984 square feet. But we're demolishing 4,900, excuse me, 493 square feet of existing floor area. So the net difference is 1,491 square feet on a lot that is 10,758 square feet. Next slide, please. Further, the lot coverage on the property decreases, as we've noted. Ernie also noted the 270 square foot additional facade of that rear wall will be exposed. The proposed addition also allows the historic building to retain its interior features with only minor modifications, which is really beneficial to be able to retain the interior historic features of the house as well. And it's not going to be substantially more detrimental than existing nonconforming structures, we've noted. Next slide, please.
Lisa, may I cut in for one second, please?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Thank you. I apologize. I I neglected to mention Lisa's point that she just mentioned about the the just the strategy that we're taking. Obviously, this was an important discussion in the Historic Commission review. We've painstakingly tried to not only refrain from doing any harm to the existing building, but we've tried to expose and restore as much of the original exterior as we could with the design approach that we're taking. But furthermore, I think it's important to, you know, really emphasize Lisa's point that Mr. Culture John mentioned in the last presentation, timber structures and how altering timber structures is tricky because those structures, it's it's really the combination of all the members working together that gives a structure its integrity. And this is a timber frame structure. And the the challenge of putting an addition on this building, if we would have taken a different approach and built a slightly smaller addition, we would have ended up having to do a lot more reworking of the interior of this building. Although the building is an absolutely beautiful structure, which we greatly admire, we did not want to tear apart the interiors of this building in order to make a two family unit that does not comply in any way with current codes or access or egress or even current standards in the in today's real estate world. We would have had to substantially gut the existing building to make it a successful two unit building today. And quite honestly, we've tried very hard to retain as much of the plaster and rainscoting and stairs and window treatments and moldings and trim and exposed wood as possible. And this approach that we're taking here, by taking an approach of putting an addition to the exterior, allows us to retain as much of the interior as possible. We'd like to pass this building on to future generations and have it be substantially similar to the way it's always been. And this approach, we believe, is the best opportunity for maximum preservation. I'm sorry, Lisa, back to you.
Thank you very much, Ernie. I appreciate it. And it's a nice segue into my next comment. So I understand that the board and Mr. Swanton is going to appreciate my comments here in a minute that, you know, you don't apply the Secretary of the Interior standards, but you're going to hear maybe from some folks relative to the historic nature of the area. And certainly, this house is historic. And so it was important for the Historic Commission, as well as the applicant, to make sure that it does, in fact, meet the standards relative to additions on new construction on historic structures. And so just generally, I'm going to go through those because I think it's important to note that the addition is subordinate in every way. And you can see that on on all of the plans and the renderings that we've provided. It's not the same height as the original structure. It is also more narrow and smaller and square footage. The addition may be removed in the future, not impair the essential form and integrity of the original structure. Indeed, as I've noted over and over again, we're actually restoring more of the exterior wall than exists today. The removal of the later added additions will expose that wall and the original windows. The new addition is visually separate from the original structure, and that's accomplished through both materials, as well as the hyphen that Ernie has talked about. And the addition's size, rhythm, and alignment of the windows and door openings reflect that of the original. So I just I wanted to go through those because I think it's I think it's important in this particular proposal. Next slide, please. The next thing I want to point out is that the lot in the middle is 22 to 24 Olive Street. And you'll see that it has a significant area and open space on it. And that's important because as you look up and down Olive Street, generally speaking, there are no other lots that have that amount of open space on them. Certainly, back on the corner of Merrill and Russia Street, there's a multifamily house that sits back on that corner. It has some open space. But really, no, no other lot has the same amount of open space that this lot has if you remove all of the outbuildings and the current additions or even after the proposed addition is put on it. Most of the lots are nonconforming for lot coverage. Right across the street on Russia Street, that lot that also faces Russia Street doesn't even have the 25 foot front setback off of Russia Street that this lot has. And I pointed that out a little while ago. So we've provided to you, as you, I just, I think this visual is important. We've provided to you that if you compare this property as proposed to the surrounding area by footprint of the structures, finished area density per 10,000 square feet or finished area per 10,000 square feet, the proposal is in the middle or the less dense side as compared to the rest of this neighborhood. And I think that that's important because, you know, you're going to hear and you may have gotten some letters relative to the size of this addition. But the size of the addition meets zoning in all dimensional respects and clearly is less dense on its lot than most all other structures on Olive Street, either the short end of Olive Street, Olive Street High, or if you go all the way from or Olive Street to Washington or if you go all the way down to Merrimack Street. And I thought that that was important to note. So with that, I think you can go to the next slide. I think, and then those are the comparisons we provided to the board. You can see that the finished area per 10,000 square feet is, this is on the short section of Olive Street, the immediate neighborhood is 4,657. This is the last column to the right that we provided to the board. And you can see that it falls right in the middle, excuse me, of the finished area per 10,000 square feet on the immediate neighborhood. The columns under finished area to the left third of this slide is the actual finished area as opposed to a comparison of 10,000 square feet. And again, you can see that the finished area is also, while it's a little bit on the higher side, it's not, those lots are all much smaller than the lot that we have on Olive Street. If you go to the next slide, please. And then if you compare it to the neighborhood overall, it also falls right in the middle. If you compare it on a per lot area 10,000 square feet basis, it falls in the middle because of the size of the lot. So with that, I think that we request the board issue a special permit for nonconformities. The architectural style, size, and design of the proposed renovated property is appropriate for the neighborhood and certainly not more sub, not substantially more detrimental than the current preexisting nonconforming structure. Thank you.
Lisa, I wanted to add just a couple of more points. Regarding the regarding the lot itself, across Olive Street from our property is 29 Olive Street. 29 Olive Street is the largest building in the immediate area. It has six units in it as opposed to our two. And those six units cover 62% of its site. We cover approximately 24% of our site. 29 Olive Street has 50% more floor area in that building than we're proposing for our lot, 7337. And what's interesting about that figure, the 7337 of the building across the street, is that number closely compares to the amount of open space that we're proposing on our lot. We have approximately 7,025 square feet of open space that are being proposed in our plan. That amount of open space is almost as large as the floor area of the largest building in the neighborhood across the street. And in fact, that 7,025 square feet is larger than virtually every other lot in this neighborhood. If you take the size of the lots that's in the accompanying diagrams and look at the size of them, for example, 28 Olive Street, pick one randomly, the size of that lot is 3,490 square feet. We have twice as much open space on our lot as that lot has lot area. So I think when you consider the size of our lot and the proposal, I think we're in keeping with the scale of the neighborhood. In fact, we have significantly more area open on our site relative to the size of our lot than most other lots do. Thank you.
Okay. Was there anything else? Attorney Mead or Mr. Mayo?
Not at this time. Thank you.
No, I'm also, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Mead. And thank you, Mr. Mayo, for that presentation. With that, I'll close the presentation portion of the public hearing, and we'll go to the public comment section, and I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to go ahead. Yes.
Could I just break in for one moment? It was my, it was my intention to recuse myself from this matter, and I realized I had neglected to do so only after Attorney Mead had begun her presentation. So I will recuse myself from this matter.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. And so with that recusal of Mr. Delisle, allow me to restate the five voting members for this application are myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Chen, and Mr. Bennet. And with that, we will go ahead and open the second portion of the public hearing, which is the public comment section. I'll ask Ms. Sullivan, if you could put up the, I see it there, the slide for instructions for public comment. Members of the public in attendance, just feel free to raise your hand by clicking the bottom of your Zoom screen. Raise your hand, you'll be recognized, and we'll just ask you to unmute your mic. Please try to keep your comments to within two minutes and just give your name and address for Ms. Joy, our keeper of the record. So I see Michael Tucker and Mr. Tucker, if you want to go ahead and unmute your mic, we'll recognize you, and you you have the floor.
Good morning. Good evening, Mr. Chair, honorable members. This is Bill Sheehan. I'm using Mike Tucker's computer. Mike is with me. And I represent Carol Zamprona, 20 Olive Street in Newburyport. Ms. Zamprona faces what is described by the architect as the north elevation of the proposed structure. The proposed structure, simply put, is massive. It is totally out of character with the size of the neighborhood dwellings. It has over 5,000 square feet of finished area, is almost twice as big as the next largest house, and over three times the size of many of the dwelling units in the neighborhood. I hope that the board has available to it a property information outline, which we presented today, care of Mr. Port to the board, together with some photographs. I'd inquire of Caitlin whether you have those.
Hi, we do, we do not have those as Mr. Port is on vacation this week.
All right. Well, let me, let me then summarize what is in the table because there was a reference at the conclusion of the applicant's presentation. There was a discussion about 29 Olive Street. When you look at the other 14 properties on Olive Street and Russia Street that are in the immediate neighborhood of the subject property, what you will see is finished area that ranges from 1,088 square feet to 2,590 square feet. And please keep in mind that the existing structure at 2224 Olive Street is now 3,567 square feet, and it is proposed to exceed over 5,000 square feet. So you can see that this proposed structure is totally out of character with the size of the neighborhood dwellings. Mr. Ms. Zamprona's home is about a dozen paces from what has been referred to as the addition. And I asked the board to note that what is called the addition is really, it's a second dwelling. It's attached to the existing structure by a hyphen so as to avoid the ordinance's recent prohibition of two separate dwellings on a single nonconforming lot. The both the lot and the structure are presently nonconforming. The lot simply is too small for a two family by nearly one third. The structure is now too close to Olive Street. It's too close to my client's property. The applicant nonetheless is asking you to allow a huge increase in finished area on a lot containing far fewer square feet than required by zoning. The applicant is also asking you to allow construction of a structure that will have a height of some 24 to 25 feet for a length of some 85 feet facing my client's house. When presently, my client is looking at a 24 foot high section of the structure, which is now only 38 feet in length, there is an enormously negative impact on my client with respect to the proposed structure. The applicant is proposing to more than double the length of the two story wall, which will block all light and air from the desirable southwest to my client's property. And where the existing wall is already too close to my client's home and is nonconforming. While technically, the lot coverage has not increased because of the removal of some low slung outbuildings, the replacement of those scattered buildings with the enormous two story addition results in a huge increase in massing detrimental to my client and to the neighborhood. There has been a discussion about how many square feet of finished area there are per 10,000 square feet. That, with all due respect, is not really the question here. The question is not so much whether the house is too big for the lot, but whether the the house as proposed is too big for the neighborhood. The answer is obviously yes. It is two houses in one with over 5,000 square feet of finished area, so much larger than any other property in the neighborhood other than a building which houses six condominium units. The applicant's proposed structure will choke off light. It will choke off air and overcrowd the existing nonconforming lot. In a case very similar to involving a zoning ordinance, very similar to the zoning ordinance of Newburyport, the Supreme Judicial Court has relatively recently weighed in in the in the Bransford case. In the Bransford case, the applicant proposed to increase 1,250 square feet of living area to 2,300 square feet, which would increase by, which would exceed by more than 500 square feet, the average structure, with a footprint addition of 200 square feet on a 22,000 square foot lot. That Bransford, Bransford case resulted in reduced open space on the lot, increased density of the neighborhood, and the court affirmed a denial. Reduced open space on the lot, increased density of the neighborhood, and the court affirmed a denial. Of a forty-eight, section six special permit, just as is being requested here. We have three thousand five hundred sixty-seven square feet. Increased to over five thousand square feet. And much more by way of excess over the average structure in the neighborhood, much more than the five hundred square feet. As in Bransford. In addition, the footprint addition here is five times what was suggested in Bransford. It's a thousand nine hundred ninety-two square feet on a lot half the size of the lot in the Supreme Judicial Court case that I'm referring. Here. As there. The reduction in area not covered by a two-story structure, the increased density, the loss of light and air. All adds up to a proposed structure which is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And therefore, in the discretion of this board, the board should deny the requested special permit. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Attorney Sheen. Recognizing now Amy Badger. Ms. Badger, if you want to unmute your mic, you have the floor. Please just give your name and address for our our record keeper, please.
Yes, I'm Amy Badger and I'm a thirty-year, thirty-plus-year resident of twenty-one Olive Street, which is across the street from. The home that we are discussing. And I use the word home specifically because it is a stately old home. Which is really kind of the the jewel of Olive Street. And it's got a fairly modest backyard. It's not a terribly spacious backyard, but it's proportional to the. Context of the other neighbors and their yards. And for such a big house, it's actually kind of a modest yard. But what's being proposed here? I just want to remember that this is a. Backyard we're talking about, and this is not a piece of land to develop. This house, as it is right now, would be a gem restored by someone who would want it as a stately, single-family home. But if that's not the case, it never made it to the market. So. It's it's zoned for two-family and the current square footage of nearly four thousand square feet allows for. Two quite livable units that are actually in much more keeping with the neighborhood. And it adds no hulking structure. The numbers to me seem fuzzy and I don't need it explained tonight, but I. To be taking away some one-story garden sheds and kitchen additions. And replacing them with two-story. Buildings and say this is a comparison comparable. Trade-off, it just isn't when it comes to the light and the. And the area. But by adding a whole separate house in the backyard, the property becomes much more valuable only to the developer and certainly not to the neighborhood. We've been told throughout the or at the historic committee what the developer is allowed to do by right. And I guess I'm asking the committee, what rights do we have? The neighbors, the abutters, the community members. What do we do when we're faced with this kind of development? By allowing this project to move forward, the neighbors, the neighborhood, and I think the whole town pay the price while only the developer benefits. And we're left with more cars and density and less light, less trees, less green space. And there's only a downside to this already densely populated neighborhood. I believe this is called infill and we're seeing it all over town and here it is on Olive Street. So if we don't have rules and laws within our city organizations to control this kind of infill. And what I feel like is kind of a disregard for the quality of life for the people who live here. May I ask how, other than this forum, do we address this issue? I appreciate your time and consideration of this particular issue, but also of how. Your consideration will impact our neighborhoods and the rest of the community overall. I obviously oppose this size and the scale of this project and I think it could be done in a much more modest way. Within the existing structure and become wholly acceptable for the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Badger. Recognizing Micah Donahue. Micah Donahue, Donahue, if you want to kindly. Unmute your mic and you have a floor and I will ask, though, of course, we're exercising, I have the ability to exercise discretion and have been and will continue to. But do please respect the courtesy of the two-minute rule. We do ask that you try to compress your thoughts and comments as best you can. Certainly within reason and this way we can have ample time to make sure that we hear from everyone. And with that. Micah Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Micah Donahue at sixteen Olive Street on two doors down. I'm one of the. Folks that would be impacted and in the neighborhood by such a large structure. Taking up what is a, as Amy said, a real gem on Olive Street. This house is far more visible than other. Homes on Olive Street. It is because of that corner lot, because of the current open space around it. It has a much larger presence than some of the others. I would agree that the it would seem the board's job here is not to. Able not being able to change the past to help improve the future. You have, you know, heard from a variety of. You know, perspectives, the the nature of the neighborhood and the percentage of of coverage. And I would say that this particular property has. You know, needs a special protection toward that end of preserving the space and and size of the neighborhood. And a couple, just click quick points of clarification. Number one, we have not, the abutters, the lawyer that Carol hired have not had a chance, adequate chance to review. The measurements of the property. Those were only submitted to my knowledge today or seen publicly today. We, you know, we don't think that the board would have had substantial time to review those either. And we also question the amount of parking added to the lot. Where there are two spaces, two lots, two parking areas noted as nine by eighteen feet. But are supposed to accommodate two cars each. I don't see that, how that's possible. It seems like there might be a continuance suggested. To allow time to review the measurements and to correct those parking areas if they are in error. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. And before I go further. Caitlin, i- is there a part of this application that was just submitted today?
There appears to be a slide in the presentation that includes measurements of the walls. So that's new.
Okay, so it's just that that slide and I'm assuming the whatever calculus is contained on that slide with the measurements. That was.
That's right. Yep, the last few pages are new as well.
Very good. All right. And if I can ask Attorney Sheen, if you don't mind, just just lowering your hand so that we'll we'll be able to see who's who still has yet to be recognized. I appreciate that. I will recognize the next hand. It's just listed on our attendees list as Jer L. J E R capital L. If you could unmute your mic, you have the floor. I'm sorry, we we can't hear you. If you want to just click the microphone icon on the bottom left of your screen. You'll see that there's a red line through it and it should go green when you click it. We'll we'll circle back to we'll circle back to Jer L. Hello, ma'am. I can see you on the Zoom screen. If your mute, your microphone is muted. If you don't mind the bottom left of your screen, clicking the. The microphone icon should enable it and unmute your mic. There you go.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, ma'am. And if you could just give your name and address for our for our keeper of the minutes.
Okay, my name is Carol Rollo. I'm an abutter on twenty-six Olive Street.
Thank you, Ms. Rollo. You have you have the floor.
And you can hear me because I can't hear you.
Yes, we can hear you. You can. Are you you do not hear me now?
Scale, appearance and appropriateness are being overridden by what can be done to this property. To make more profit and avoid zoning permits. Hopefully, the improvements to the exterior of the historic house will be honored. But it seems like there's been a change of strategy. What used to be a mudroom pass-through is now being called a hyphen. But the bottom line is almost two thousand square feet. Of a structure is being added. And. The open spaces, including four parking spaces off of Russia Street, and I couldn't find dimensions. But the prior owners had tandem spots off of Olive Street. And I don't know why that's not being acknowledged or the gate being moved to accommodate larger vehicles. But. I don't think a two-family needs six spaces. Tandem parking is so commonplace in the city of Newburyport. I don't know why it's not an option and why. Forced vehicles have to be backing up to the narrow end of Russia Street. I'm not trying to be negative. I was really looking forward to this property being cleaned up and getting nice neighbors. I'm just tired of seeing. Money talk and regulations being put in place to the detriment of the neighborhood. So I realized like there are no controls, no order ordinances. And no one can predict who the future buyer will be. But I do hope that everyone look re-looks at the parking situation. And also the size of the structure and it's basically an infill in the backyard. I mean, that's been sacrificed. So I thank you for your time and your thoughts, but. We'll see where this goes. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. If if we can move on to our next our next attendee. We'll recognize Elizabeth Hallett. Ms. Hallett, you you have the floor and just kindly just unmute your mic, please, and give your name and address for the record.
Okay, can you hear me? My name is Elizabeth Hallett, twenty-three Olive Street.
We can hear you. Thank you very much.
Okay. We are thirteen-year residents here on Olive Street. And. Twenty twenty and twenty-two is is really a gem, as they were, as my neighbors were saying, on Olive Street. And part of what makes this property attractive is the open space in the backyard. As we all know, it is an historic structure. Which used to be the old lady's home, as so-called, in Newburyport. And without that open space around it, it just loses its import as as that. Sort of historic structure. Certainly, the size and scale are detrimental to our area. To this neighborhood, the pre-existing non-conforming structures, one-story structures. Either attached to the older home or the shed or the garden shed on the property. Are certainly not do not interfere with the the air and light movement in the on the property and in the neighborhood. Whereas this large two-story bulky structure will certainly impair the view of, you know, the back of this historic home. As well as as the views viewsapes from Russia Street and Olive Street. And it it just does not fit. It's just simply too large and out of place and is in fact. What we all are calling infill in Newburyport. It's part of part of that. And another point with all the exterior sheds and so forth removed from the property. Where will these homeowners store their lawn mowers, snow blowers, perhaps bicycles, et cetera? And then will they then request shed construction to follow for somewhere to store these these sorts of items? The parking again is another issue for us. At our home at twenty-three Olive, we do not have a driveway, as many people do not on Olive Street. And as a lot of us know, tandem parking is not always convenient. Many people will just rather park on the street than go out and move a vehicle that's parked in tandem. For the front vehicle to to be able to move. And therefore, taking up parking places that are needed by those of us who do not even have a driveway. So the addition of all these parking places. Particularly on narrow Russia Street where two cars cannot pass. Is is just ridiculous, in my opinion. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Hallett. I'll recognize that next Ms. Carol Zamprona. Ms. Zamprona, you. You have the floor. Just unmute your mic and kindly just give your name and address for for Ms. Joy, our record keeper.
Thank you very much. This is Carol Zamprona, twenty Olive Street. I'm the direct abutter to this property. Attorney Sheehan opened our our conversation, so I will keep it fairly brief. I do want to note that some of the pictures, especially slides twelve and thirteen, which show the east and west elevations. Seemed to have erased my house and replaced them with a very large oak tree. It's making the property look much more spacious and wide open than it is without my home existing where it does. So just wanted to call out those slides. As Attorney Sheehan has called out, I'm not looking to live next to two dwellings, which really are two conjoined masses. The historic architecture experts at the Newburyport Preservation Trust have opposed this project from the beginning. Keep in mind, it was a split decision by the Newbury Historical Commission, so although they did approve it, there were at least two members that voted against and others that expressed concerns. The director butters, including myself, others in the neighborhood you've heard from tonight, have all spoken up in opposition. I was a member of your ZBA meeting on July the twenty-seventh, and if you recall, there was a pretty lengthy debate. About a project at eighty-six to eighty-eight Prospect Street. Many of the members of this committee seemed to have pretty big concerns with the design. But stated that since there were no community objections on massing and scale, they didn't have a reason to vote against it. And the comment was that not a single neighbor had called or written in to complain. So using that same logic, you've heard from myself, from Liz, from Carol, from Micah, from Amy, and there may still be others waiting to speak. They're all neighbors speaking up to oppose the mass and scale of this building and the change to this beautiful historic structure. So I hope, following the same guidelines that you used in July. That you were listening and hearing the the objection to a building of this size on this lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zamprona. Moving to recognize next next, Mr. Steven Bodich. And Mr. Bodich, if you wouldn't kindly. Unmute your mic and give your name and address and you have the floor.
Okay, sure. Can you hear me?
We can, sir. Yes.
Okay. Yes, my name is Steve Bowrich. I live at twenty-one Olive Street. I've lived here for a little over twenty-one years. As a an adjacent, not a directly adjacent, but across the street of Butter. We look at this house really as the anchor of lower Olive Street. It is definitely has historical and architectural significance. And as many of the other speakers have said tonight, it has character on lower Olive that draws the eye to it. It's a beautiful backyard. And to fill that backyard, not a back, not a lot, but this might, as Amy Badger said, the backyard to fill that backyard. With nearly twenty nearly two thousand square feet of additional structure seems absurd. It's just too massive for the space. I also think that it will have a significant impact on the light and air. As we all look at that area as the sun sets, to look at that sunset now with a large massive house in the middle of it seems absurd. There have been comments about the parking as well. I think the fact that. Two new curb cuts with parking spaces of those dimensions seems inadequate for what are likely to be several Tahos, Escalades and Suburbans that were pulling into that area. I wonder how these large vehicles will navigate the narrow Russia Street when the snowbanks are piled high. And visibility is restricted quite poorly, I suspect. I, in closing, I'd like to say simply that the, over the past six months, I've listened to. the, uh, over the past six months, I've listened to many comments from the Historical Commission as we progress through this, on this project. And I have heard exclusively negative comments from the abutters. I have not heard a single comment in support of this. And I think that speaks volumes to the, one, the neighborhood position, but also the lack of support for this type of construction in this neighborhood at this time. I just think that should be brought to back, uh, brought to your attention as well. And with that, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bodich. And recognizing the next hand, Mr. Thomas Colterjohn. Mr. Colterjohn, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, sir.
Thank you. Tom Colterjohn, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. The trust opposes this project in its current form. It needs to be reduced significantly in size. It will have a negative impact on this historic neighborhood. The current house sits on a corner lot and as such is a very dominant and highly visible part of the streetscape and the neighborhood. The massing and sheer size and scale of this proposed building detracts from the neighboring houses. If it were in a distant, different neighborhood surrounded by large lots, it would be another matter altogether. It could be a pleasing design, but not here. This proposal distorts the corner lot to become more dominant, so much so that it becomes intrusive. Pretty visual pictures of how it is intended to look when completed do not do the impact on the neighborhood justice. We have heard comments from many neighbors and abutters. None of whom are in favor of this project. Please listen to them and continue this hearing. In addition to giving the neighbors more time to study details of this project, it would, at your direction, give this developer time to reduce the size of this project. We would love to see the historic house restored and a modest addition added. This developer is perfectly capable of doing so, but needs your direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Colterjohn. Um, seeing no further hands raised, I'll give it another moment. I will go ahead and, oh, I'm sorry, I do see Stephanie Nikicich. Ms. Nikicich, I'll recognize you. You, if you would mind unmuting your mic, if you haven't already, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephanie Nikicich, 93 High Street. So I, I mostly want to support other speakers. Uh, Caitlin confirmed that there are measurements that were just presented or made available today. Um, and I think that the hearing should be continued to allow you and abutters to review all plan measurements. And then I wanted to comment on what Mr. Colterjohn was talking about, which is the corner lot problem. So the applicant does, you know, the applicant says the Historical Commission lifted demolition delay, but it did that with two members voting no. Uh, the applicant also has brought forward to you, the Secretary of the Interior Standards that the Historical Commission looks at. And while they're saying compliance with those standards are not explicitly part of your criteria, they ask you to consider them in analyzing if this project is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. But one of these standards is not mentioned by the applicant. And that is, a new addition should not be highly visible from the public right of way. A rear or other secondary, secondary elevation is usually the best location for a new addition. Because this is a corner lot, the addition will be highly visible from two public ways. In this situation, the size of the addition is even more critical for this neighborhood. The addition is too large and, as many abutters have said, detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nikicich. And now I see the, I see another hand. It's simply listed as Francis. And if you can hear us, Francis, feel free to unmute your mic and you have the floor.
Hi, my name is Francis Moore, and I've lived on the street longer than anybody. So um, my, I've been there for 49 years and my kids referred to this house as the queen of Olive Street. Everybody has adored this house. My family, as we grew up with it. My feeling is that this addition steals by, by virtue of the vertical space that is being proposed, it steals from our neighborhood, our sense of air, of light, of trees, of bushes. It just, it's just grabs it and it just feels really unfair. And it seems really unfair as well to Carol, who's how, who is affected by the aesthetics more than anybody of this addition being put in there and that it economically affects her house more than anybody else's. I just feel it's unconscionable that this should be just another, another house being put in there. And it's just a fill-in. This is not an addition. It's just a fill-in for another whole house going into the neighborhood. Um, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, any other, anyone else who wishes to speak? Now would be the time. Just raise your hand. If not, I will close this portion of the public hearing and move on to questions. Going once, going twice. No further hands. I will go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. And we will now go into questions from the board. We'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chempetti. Uh, I would just like to start out with asking the applicant to maybe address the parking issue that came up and maybe a little better explanation of, of the parking lots, the space, the dimensions that were brought up in, in comments.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. Moore. So as you can see on this, on this slide, there are four parking spaces that meet the requirements, the city's dimensional requirements for parking on Russia Street and two curb cuts. And then there is one single space where it exists today off of Olive Street. Um, and so those are the parking spaces. That's five parking spaces for required to exist today um, on Olive Street. If I could just throw one other thing in there, because I, I think it's important as you go through this, the applicant submitted their revised plans on November 2nd. It, those revisions met all of the filing requirements of this board, including all of the dimensional requirements and including the last two slides that we have shown. That was part of my filing on November 2nd. Uh, the only addition that we put in today was, um, there had been some questions for the dimensions of the floor plans in the addition. That's the only thing that, that hasn't changed. Somebody asked for the actual dimensions because apparently they couldn't scale them off of this plan, which has a scale and for whatever reason, they didn't do it. So there's no new information that was presented this evening. I also just want to clarify my colleague Attorney Sheen's comments related to the Bransford case, lest you all be left with a misinterpretation of that case perhaps, or a different interpretation of that case. Um, it should be noted that the real question, the Bransford case, was in fact whether or not on a pre-existing non-conforming lot that was non-conforming for a lot area only, whether in addition to a house that only went up and didn't change the footprint would be subject to a special permit at all, not whether or not uh, the details of the discretion of the board were correct or incorrect. Um, what the court found was that in fact, uh, in a 3-3 decision, uh, the Bransford case, uh, the court said yes, it would be subject to a special permit, which, which would be at the discretion of the board and they could apply, uh, the substantially more detrimental criteria as required. The Bransford case was later clarified by the Bjorkland decision, which affirmed that in fact, it was not by right, but by special permit that a person would modify pre-existing non-conforming structure, which was non-conforming by virtue of the non-conforming lot area. Um, so we're certainly not disputing the fact that the board has the discretion here under a special permit. Um, and the court itself said that, in fact, the board had discretion under a special permit. So I, I just want to be clear about what the Bransford, and then it's a case later, the Bjorkland case actually said. Um, with that, I'll go back to the board and I apologize if I went on.
No, that's, that's fine. And I'm going to just stop there and I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and thank you, Attorney Mead, for addressing Mr. Moore's question in detail. Mr. Delisle.
Uh, he recused.
Ah, of course. Thank you. Mr. Swanton.
Uh, thank you. Um, first off, I want to say thank you guys for working this through, for delaying it enough times that you got through the Historical Commission first before you came to us. That's appreciated, although I realize it was not unanimous there, but still, that's good practice. Um. I, uh, this is currently a two-family house and it's proposed to still be a two-family house. I assume that's correct, right?
That is correct.
Um, and I guess, you know, unlike some other projects we've looked at recently, you know, that have a lot of massing, when it's right on top of the street, it's a problem. Here, it's, it's set back well, which is also a plus. But my concern is the total amount of massing, which is, I think we have heard from an awful lot of the abutters who have spoken. And I was trying to figure it out. I mean, you have, you have the coverage, you, you said one from 24.7 to 24.5. So you basically have very similar footprint. But I guess you replaced a lot of one-story little buildings with a, with a large two-story building. So even though the coverage is the same, I guess you went up 1491. Did I follow that? 1491 square feet? That's, is that the increase in massing on this overall site?
Mr. Swanton through the chair. Um, so it, we took off the addition, right? So there were two additions. So we took off both of those additions, withdrew in the, almost the entire length of the rear of the house.
Right.
And um, and then we removed the, there's a shed and then, of course, the larger, you saw the photo of the larger uh, workshop on the property. Um, so the total amount of additional square feet that we're adding um, is 1,491. That's the net um, square footage.
Okay. And, and the fact that the overall footprint didn't change that much, your coverage is similar, is because you got more square footage by basically going two stories where, like even the, the current addition, it says on this plan here, it's just one story, right?
Yeah, no, that's, yes, yes. So the current addition is one story. That's correct.
Right. And, and the garage, I mean, the, uh, the workshop is one story. And the shed is one story and the greenhouse is one story and, and there's another one, a wood patio. So, so those are all little buildings?
Well, the wood patio is not, it, it's kind of a wood patio. I don't know what to say, but it's not a building. So.
It's a patio. Right. I get it. All right. So, so the concern that I heard from a lot of folks i- is around when you take all that square footage and you, you make, you may keep the footprint the same, but when you add a second story and you pull it all together in the middle, it would, um, it adds a lot of apparent nesting to a neighborhood that doesn't have building, I mean, it has a building across the street, but it's got six units. I mean, it doesn't, I, 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 I'm, um, you had some tables you put up, but, but could you please try to address the question everybody raised of, isn't this building too large? I mean, it's a, it's a pretty building for certain neighborhoods, but in this neighborhood, could you please show how this 5,000 square feet is, um, doesn't stand out? I, I, you had another chart, I think, that tried to do that.
Absolutely. In fact, I, I would think it stands out for just the opposite. This, this property, as Ernie pointed out, is going to have more open space on it than most other properties in the neighborhood. Um, and if you could go Caitlin to the mind maps, I think would be the best. Um, I think that's like the third to the last slide, perhaps. And you can see that from this, uh, you can see the amount of open space on this lot. So if you could just blow it up a little bit to be clear, um, so. Thank you. So the, so you can see the house obviously in the yellow outline, right? That's the property. So right across the street is the six-unit building. And so it's building on lot coverage, not by dwelling unit, even the house right next door, um, represented by Mr. Sheen, Attorney Sheen, is actually, that's a two-family house. So if you take the whole lot, right, so the, um, it's not a 1,200 square foot house. It's a 2,400 square foot building, right? And they're all a building similar to the six unit across the street. So if you look at all of that in the neighborhood, you can see that this actually ends up falling in the middle of that. And I'll turn on to the, to the tables in a minute. But obviously, on the opposite side of Olive Street, you can see those lots are much more densely built upon. Um, and the, the lot, right, go, excuse me.
Could I just interrupt for one sec? I, my question wasn't about coverage. My question was about the size of this building. It, and this is a good page to have up. Um, if you take the buildings in yellow there and you add a big building off to the left of it, then it does look like the only building on, on the street that's anywhere. I mean, there's one that's bigger across the street, the six-unit building. But is there any other building that's, that's, I mean, I think the attorney said, I think he said it'd be something like twice as big as the next biggest building. What's the next biggest building on this picture here? Just to.
Well, I would, I'd like, I'd like to take the actual numbers because first of all, part of the building here is coming off and then a portion is at being added, right? So it, so if you could go to the next slide, please, Caitlin. So if you look at, um, if you look at this slide and you look at finished area, um, certainly the finished area, so 18 and 20 Olive Street is a two-family. So the finished area is, um, uh, 1531, almost 33, 32,000 square feet, is that right? Um, I mean, 32, 3,200 square feet. Um, and then you've got the, obviously the six unit, which is 12,000 square feet. Um, and uh, so those are the other single-family homes. So yes, it's larger than the other single-family homes for finished area on that section of Olive Street. So if you go to the next slide, Caitlin.
Is finished area, what is finished area? I mean, is that like the same as accessories used for living space?
Um, I would say it's about that. We took it off the card, um, so they would be consistent. So it was.
Asses's cards. Okay.
Yeah, the assessor's cards. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to make sure that. So in this, in this one, you see, so here's the proper number. So 18 to 20 is 3,200 square feet. And then they go 1,000, 2,300, 3,100. Ours is 55,100, right? So again, it's true that it is, there's one that's 7,000, 23 to 35, 25 to 35, that's 7,000. Uh, 45 Olive Street is 5,000. So it's certainly not the largest building with finished area. And there are others that are over 3,000. Uh, and then there's a 7,000, a 5,000. And then if you do that as a percentage of the, of 10,000 square feet, which is the size of the lot area, it falls right in the middle of it. So it's a larger lot. And if you apply the dimensional requirements in the ordinance, then it, it's certainly well within those requirements. You know, I, I would add that this lot is a completely conforming lot for a single-family home. And all the people that are listening know what I'm about to say is the applicant could build without any relief a very large, much taller, single-family home by putting an addition also on this property. And has chosen to do this instead, which results in a more compact continuing use as a two-family home. Um, and so they're moving forward with that instead of the buy right, much larger attached garage room over mean, um, mean height, 35-foot addition.
Okay. I mean, I, I guess I understand. It's a, it's a pretty good-sized lot. So. Okay. I mean, I, I guess I understand it. It's, it's a pretty good sized lot. So it's relative to its lot, the building may not be large, but in the neighborhood, there aren't very many other structures as big as this is proposed. I kind of get the dichotomy there. All right. I, I thank you very much for that. And I guess, the, the other thing I just want to echo what was that, I tried to look at these, some of these massing calculations this weekend when I had some time. And I, I think this additional information you provided this afternoon would have helped me. And I would, it's unfortunate that some of this stuff comes in late when it's, when it's important for us to understand. Because the problem is if we, if we come up with something like, let's say, we look at this afternoon, we have a question, we want to ask the staff at the, at the city hall, it's really not fair to them. They don't have time to turn around a question for us. So we really can't do that very well. So I would really appreciate it if we could try to get all the information in sooner, particularly on something like that pertains to the massing, which is like the biggest complaint I've heard from the neighborhood. Anyway, just a comment for the future.
I, I, I can appreciate that, Mr. Swanton. You know, the applicant has submitted a significant amount of information. And, you know, shows the dimensional requirements, the height, all the, all the dimensions on the plans. You know, floor plans are not a requirement of a submission. And I understand why they can be helpful, but the information is also there. So I, I hear what you're saying, but you know, we could go on and on and on with the detail to be added. It, the question is, when do you stop?
Oh, I, I hear that. It's just in, in this case where it's such a concern in the neighborhood, I was trying to understand it myself. And the additional data was helpful. Anyway, I have no other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. We'll hear from Mr. Chandler.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I, I just wanted to start a discussion on what's behind, as you're hearing, and I think most of us, when we looked at the presentation, the thing that struck us was the size of this new building in the backyard. What's driving the size of that building? I mean, we see a lot of applications come before us where someone knocks down an old, you know, kind of dilapidated addition and puts a, you know, a nice little, I don't know, 500 to 1,000 square foot addition on the back and it's done tastefully. And, you know, it, it's an easy one to jump, jump on board with. This, this is a pretty large building with a hyphen in the middle. What, what's causing it to go that way? Is, is there something in the background? I mean, is, is that really meant to be one unit and the front house is another unit? It just seems like an odd, odd way to go about getting more space in a two-family house.
Mr. Shagnis, for sure. I'm, I'm gonna ask Caitlin to go to slide either 17 or 18 for a second. And I think that I'm going to turn it over to Ernie. So the, the second unit becomes the rear with a part of the hyphen. There's a significant part of the hyphen that's part of the second unit and, and then part of the hyphen belongs to the first unit. But as Ernie said earlier, it goes to preserving the interior of the existing historic structure. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ernie to talk about, to talk about that.
Yeah, the, the existing structure, if looking at the image that we see right now, has a central corridor that starts on Olive Street and runs through the building towards the present backyard or towards the addition, let's say. And the, the space in the interior is divided into basically four quadrants. There are four rooms on each floor. One in each of the corners of the building with a central corridor running down the center. The central corridor contains the existing main stair of the building, which is in and of itself a beautiful historic element that we'd like to retain. But the building does not have an inherent organization that is conducive to a proper 21st century two-family structure. The way that the current structure is subdivided is sort of their, the organization of it is hodgepodge. I'm not sure how else to say it. There's questionable areas of code conformance. There are certainly not the number of rooms or spaces that would be conducive to a separate unit. And, and actually, when you walk through the building, there was a place where one of the timber columns had been removed to make space for a kitchen. I, I don't know when that was done. But you can actually walk on the second floor and feel the bounce in the floor because whoever did that change did not make any structural modifications to the building to account for the timber frame being altered. We did extensive amount of study to try and see how we could subdivide the four-square floor plan into two units with kitchens and family room and a couple of bedrooms and bathrooms for each unit. And it became clear to us that we were going to have to substantially gut the interior of that building to be able to get two viable units in it. And I understand people sometimes make sacrifices for older buildings, but there does have to be, in order for that building to be successful in that neighborhood, it does have to take into account issues of building code, building access, that sort of thing. And also, they have to be livable spaces. And there were sacrifices made in past renovations or past, past fit-outs that made some of the spaces unlivable in today's world. And quite honestly, the idea of removing more structure to try and fit in the spaces we needed meant that we were going to have to do a substantial amount of reinforcing, removal, reconfiguring, gutting of the interior. And we would have lost quite a bit of the historic elements and character of the building. Maybe from the street, people might not see much of a difference. On the interior, it would look nothing like what this historic house has been. And a lot of the features that really make this house historic inside and out would be lost. And.
Just, just so we, for brevity, is, is the existing building a two-family today?
Yes.
So all this discussion you just had about, you know, trying to keep it kind of the way it is, there's two kitchens in it, right? There's got to be multiple bathrooms. That's all going to be altered when, because you're going to change this front building to a single family and the rear building to another single family. Is that the intent?
No. So if I, if I could, so the part of the kitchens are in that, those additions that were taking off. And, but that's what Ernie was talking about, Mr. Chagman, is that it had been, it has been chopped up, if you will, but not the, the guts haven't been lost, but it's been kind of chopped up. So it's not really usable without significant further work as a two-family.
And furthermore, like you, you mentioned bathrooms. There are bathrooms that are tucked underneath stairs that have no headroom, where somebody would have to bend down to be able to use bathroom, spaces that people nod and wink at in, you know, 1950, but I can't build in 2021. So, you know, there are lots of that sort of things. There's a an accessory stair that's used for one of the units, the, the space is divided left, right. One of the stairs that goes from Russia Street entrance up to the second floor, that is a completely non-conforming stair in any way. And in fact, it doesn't even have a landing on the second floor level. You go from a stair, you, you, you get to the top riser and you have to actually climb a step up to get into a room with no landing. If I substantially alter this building, I can't keep that stair. I have to build a stair that meets basic building code. So there is a lot of non-conforming elements in this building that as a two-family would not work if we renovated this building, that don't even meet basic code requirements. So it's not as simple as just saying, let's just put a coat of paint on the interior and keep it a two-family. It doesn't, it doesn't work. It doesn't meet basic life safety issues on the interior. It doesn't meet basic circulation requirements. And to do so would involve us cutting the, the heart of this building out, which is not something we want to do. We actually care about this building and want to preserve as much of it as we can.
I wasn't suggesting a, a fresh coat of paint, although I'm, I'm hoping you will do that. It was more, what's driving this very large building in the back with the hyphen? And, you know, I, I think it's something that when we first, when all of us look at this presentation, it's the first thing that grabs you is this fairly large two-story building attached to another, it's, it's subordinate, I guess that, but another large building. And unfortunately, all the neighbors are gravitating to the same issue. So I was just trying to understand why it's like that. You didn't convince me there's not another way, but, but I appreciate your answer. I, I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. And moving to Mr. Bennet.
Yeah. Is Attorney Shane still there?
Let's see. He's under Michael, Attorney Tucker's moniker. So yes, you're so.
I just wanted to ask him if his materials that he gave to, I guess, Andrew this today, if he gave a copy to Attorney Mead, I'll ask Attorney Mead, did you get a copy of that material, Attorney Mead?
I did. Mr. Sheehan and I have worked opposite one another for some period of time. And he's, he is always courteous to provide that material.
I, I, I would have assumed that was the case. I haven't seen that. And, Mr. Chair, I, for me personally, it would be helpful if, if I could actually spend a little time bathing in Mr. Sheehan's documents. And I know he filed them with, today with Mr. Port and Mr. Port's on vacation. So I can't really, I, I don't believe, you know, Mr. Sheehan is at fault here in getting materials to us in a timely fashion. So I'm struggling to kind of evaluate this in the absence of that, although I, I, I heard Attorney Sheehan. So it's just an observation, perhaps. I would suggest that, that perhaps the board might want to have that in front of it, Chairman, before we can conclude our deliberations. And that might suggest a continuance, but I'm not making a formal request, but I'm just throwing it out there as, as a thought. And I guess to Attorney Mead, do you have any comments or observations with respect to Attorney Sheehan's presentation?
Other than, so I, I would like to say this. You know, it's not a surprise that we are here this evening. In fact, we asked for continuance several weeks ago to this evening. So just like we have an obligation to get materials in in advance, Mr. Sheehan's office wasn't recently engaged, but has been engaged by the neighbor since the Historic Commission. So like, people don't like getting our materials the day of a meeting, I would suggest that the board should also expect that other people submit their materials. So Attorney Sheehan has about a two-paragraph letter. And then he does include a property information sheet that includes similar information in a different style than what we've provided to the board. So you know, I certainly wouldn't deny the board's ability to review that. But if the board and/or others are going to criticize us for providing information that the board already has, I would request that the board be as respectful and require the applicants to provide, provide the information in advance as well. So.
I wasn't criticizing you in any way.
No, no, I understand. I understand. So I, I guess, I, I think that the board should hear or read Mr. Attorney Sheehan's information in light of the information we provided as well. I, I don't have an objection to that at all.
If I might, Attorney Mead, I'm, I'm going to just, I'm going to just interject for a moment with, with due respect to Mr. Bennet and, and you on this. It sounds, so it, it appears, and I've been just taking notes, it looks like they're notwithstanding the volume of what the materials might be, that Attorney Sheehan has submitted some materials that no one has seen other than Attorney Mead. And they sit in Mr. Mr. Port, our planning director's inbox until his return, but I'm sure it can be retrieved or resubmitted if we ask. And it sounds as though at least one of our members, Mr. Bennet is inclined to want to, I believe, as he said, bathe himself in those documents. So we certainly would want him to have the benefit of the material. I suspect as would we all. But let me poll the board very quickly so that we can, in the interest of efficiency and economy of time, given the rest of our docket this evening, if it is something that we're inclined to want to address now, we should do it now and see if, if we're going to proceed further or whether we're going to do something other than that. I'm just going to poll each member of the board to see, is there, are you in a position, do you feel inclined to want to proceed to a decision this evening without the materials that you may not have seen? And let me just ask, starting with Mr. Moore, do you want to proceed with knowing that there might be, as Attorney Mead described, maybe two paragraphs or other materials that we haven't seen from, from Attorney Sheehan or, or others?
No, I, I would not. I think my colleagues have said it better than I have. So I don't want to steal their thunder. But I mean, clearly, the, the issue here is, is going to be the massing and any kind of information that we can gather, should be gathered and, and analyzed fully. So.
Okay. So you would, so if I'm understanding you correctly, Mr. Moore, you're, you're, you're saying that you would like to see this material and any other material in advance, digest it.
Bathe in it.
Bathe it. And, and, and then be able to make a more informed choice or decision. Okay. Not to put words in your mouth, but Mr. Swanton, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I too would really agree that it'd be nice to have some time to see the materials we haven't seen and to study them and think about them, given all that we've learned tonight. And I would hope people, please don't give us something at three o'clock on the meeting of the next meeting, at the day of the next meeting, because, because we don't necessarily all have time to do it at that moment. So try to get it to us ahead of time. And, but I would concur, it would be good to continue this to give us a chance to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Mr. Chandler.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. But I'm, I'm, I'm easy either way. But yeah, we could put, put off a decision till later. Yes.
All right. Well, so I, you know, I'll just say that, look, I, I think that it's imperative and it's, it's only balanced and fair in, in the spirit of this process. Fair to not just, you know, an applicant or the many members of the public, of which in this case I count 26 attendees. It's hard to say how many are here for this application. But let's say there was just one. One would be enough, right? As I suspect we would all agree, we, if, if we're to do this business fairly and in a balanced way and aspire to get through something to completion, we, we absolutely need to have everything. We need to have it timely. I understand that some things, you know, are de minimis changes, if changes at all, they're just additional information. But at least I think it's an overarching statement. And this is no, not directed at any of our, of the attorneys before us this evening at all. But this is just something for us to discuss with our, our colleagues in the planning office to see if we can implement a better way. But for now, and with respect to this, I, I think it sounds, Attorney Mead, it sounds as though the members are not prepared to move forward unless they sort of see the benefit of everything and know that they're coming at this with everything in hand. I have to apologize to the members of the public that are here in attendance that in the spirit of getting the best decision, we must delay any decision until we have all of the information, though I know that's, how do, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, I don't, as I said to Mr. Bennet's comments, we don't, we don't have a problem with that at all. The board didn't really actually need to be polled because that was my comment to Mr. Bennet. I don't have a problem with that. I would though, however, Mr. Chair. So the answer is we'd like a continuance, but I also would like to hear your comments relative to the proposal because we've heard from four members. And so I, I would like to hear your comments. And then I would also like to know whether or not the board would like to schedule a site visit because I think that in this instance, while a picture is worth a thousand words, being on site is also helpful to understand the neighborhood. in this instance, while a picture is worth a thousand words, being on site is also helpful to understand the neighborhood.
I will, okay, and that's fair. I I want to make, I didn't want to short circuit you hearing my my comments. I didn't have, although we only got to questions, so I didn't have. I have no further questions. I I don't yet feel as though I I'm prepared to deliberate, but I'll tell you that you know, the questions that were raised by my colleagues, I share. I I know this property well. In fact, I walked this ward when I first moved to Newburyport way back in the in the nineties. I I know it well. I I remember, I know this property. I I know, I'm sure we all do. I don't know it as intimately as the neighbors that live, you know, in in and around this area for sure. But I I'm happy to take a closer walk-through look, but I I don't really have any sense of it yet. I don't have any questions that weren't already asked about the massing, you know, whether it can be done a different way. So I I I know that's imperfect. I I wish I could give you something more.
No, that's that's fair. That's fair, for sure.
Was there anything else? Because I'll I can certainly move move this along to to a continuance so that we can get everything in hand. Aspire to have everything digested so that we can revisit this, you know, as promptly as possible, with the benefit of all the news fit to print.
So, yeah, so we would like a continuance, and I guess that I would like the board to to think about whether or not they they want to do a site visit or all go out and and visit the site themselves. So, you know, we'd like to do a site visit. I don't know if the board's interested or not. But we'd also then take a continuance.
Would would we be able to have, i- is there, I I would love to just, I don't know when I'd be able to go, and I suspect my my colleagues might be in a similar situation, but having the, you know, having you know, permission to to take a peek, even a closer peek, not trespass, of course. But just take a closer peek, is that, you know, I suspect that's not a problem, right?
Yeah, no, that's that's absolutely, that's absolutely fine, and we'll have the corners. I I think, I don't know if they're still on the corners or still in there or not, but we'll make sure the corners of the building are are flagged. So the proposed building will have the stakes over the next, you know, seven to ten days put up.
I I I, for one, you know, and I I I plan to try to come by to take a look at that, so I I just don't know when I'd be able to, but is there a date in mind, a meeting that you want to try to shoot for for a continued?
December fourteenth, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said that. Okay, so members of the ZBA, we we have a request of the applicant to continue to December fourteenth. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Moore seconded by Mr. Bennet, was that right?
Yes, okay.
Motion is made by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Bennet. Want to motion to continue the application for further information and and any possible site visit to December fourteenth, calling the role, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, motion carries, matter is continued to December fourteenth and and members of, members of the the public, neighbors that came to speak in this application. I certainly, we regret that we have to continue this. We certainly appreciate your input. We encourage you to make yourselves available if it's in the cards to do so for when we return, and we thank you for your patience. Attorney Mead and and Mr. De Mayo as well. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, moving to the next application before the ZBA. This is the public hearing of the applicant Raymond Johnson on the application of twenty Lafayette Street. This is an application for a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits and approvals to add a first level master bedroom and bath. May we hear from the applicant? I believe we will be hearing from Mr. Ray Johnston. Mr. Johnston, you have the floor.
Yes, hi, thank you very much. My name is Raymond Johnston. My wife and I, my wife Lauren and I are seeking a special permit for nonconformities to build in a seventeen by twenty-eight single-story bedroom bathroom addition to our home here on twenty Lafayette Street. That would be about four hundred and seventy squi- seventy, four hundred and seventy-six square feet. We've been here in our home for over twenty-one years. We've raised our daughters here, and we plan to stay here for many years to come. With that in mind, as we grow older, we we are thinking about first-floor living. And that's the reason we would like to add a first-floor master bedroom and bath for ourselves. The design is tasteful. It's keeping in, keeping with the character of the neighborhood. We have many direct butters who are in support of our project, and those, and some of those have, folks have provided letters of support. I do have my architect here to speak to the more technical aspects of the project. Her name is Jean Allen of J J M A.
Architects. Yep. Hello. Can everyone hear me?
We we can, Ms. Allen, and feel you have the floor. Feel free to to present your portion of the application.
All right. Could we go to slide number seven, showing the existing front elevation? It's architecturally, it's described as a old colonial-style residence, single-family. Three bedrooms on the second floor with one bedroom, one bathroom. Next slide, please. Number eight. That is the side elevation, left side elevation where the addition is planned. Next slide, please. And that's the existing rear elevation. There's a pool in the backyard and there's a patio connected to the back of the house and the family room for entertaining around the pool. And next slide. And this is the proposed bedroom, master bedroom addition. It it includes a large closet laundry area and a and a master bathroom. The bedroom, the master ba- bedroom upstairs is relatively small, small closets. And so Ray and Lauren are interested in the whole concept of aging in place, putting their bedroom on the ground floor. So that they don't have to negotiate stairs later in life. Next slide, please. And this is the proposed side elevation. It, the front wall of the proposed addition steps back away from the front of the house by almost four feet. And it aligns with the back wall of the dining room of the existing house. We minimize the slope on the roof, the roof pitch in order to clear some of the existing windows and then on the second floor. And then also to make the whole architectural statement a little bit more subdued. And, you know, rather than proposing a a dramatic roof line, we wanted to keep it a little bit lower, a little more subdued. And and just make it attached to the house. And then you go from the existing house into this this master bedroom area. Next slide, please. And this is the rear elevation, and there would be large patio doors that would face the backyard. And the existing rear elevation would remain the same. Structurally, nothing would change, just this one-story addition. And the floor plan, if you go to slide fourteen, shows the layout and so the bathroom and the walk-in closet would then be on the front of the house with smaller windows. And there would be three regular-sized windows on the sidewall, and then, as I mentioned before, the two larger patio doors that would face the backyard. Any questions?
We we may have questions. We'll get to that phase.
Okay.
I certainly appreciate your presentation. And was there anything else you wanted to add before we will close the presentation portion and we'll go to questions from the board members?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Jean. No, I just wanted to make sure that we talked about the nonconformities. I I believe we meet all of the setbacks except for the front nonexisting, and of course, that's not going to change by adding this addition.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnston, and Ms. Allen. Thank you for the presentation. We'll close this portion of the public hearing, and I will now open it up to, I'm sorry, we're gonna go to public comment first. This is when we will ask Miss Sullivan to put up the public comment. And anyone who wishes to speak in connection with this application, just raise your hand. I'll recognize you to give your name and address and share your thoughts. I see John Sarkis with a hand up. Mr. Sarkis, if you if you can hear me, just feel free to unmute your mic, and you have the floor. Though that may have been a mistake. I also see a hand up from Francis. Francis, I know you spoke on the previous application on Olive Street. I'm not sure if you wish to be heard here, or whether that was just a hand left up. And I see your hands down now. And Mr. Sarkis, I see your hand up. Do you wish to be heard on this application? If so, just unmute your mic and you have the floor. That may, that may be a mistake as well. So I see no other hands up. We can circle back if something changes, but I will go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing for the moment. And if we find out Mr. Sarkis does wish to be heard, I I'm happy to reopen that and take any any thoughts and comments from Mr. Sarkis. So we'll close that portion of the public hearing and now go to questions from the board. And we'll begin with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. I just have a quick question on maybe discussing, maybe. Would you please discuss the blending of the building materials with the the old and the new, the proposed addition with the existing dwelling? How's that gonna mesh and and what's being planned?
On the front elevation, the materials will be the same. They will match the existing front materials. And then the rest of the building then would be cedar shakes, which match the existing siding material. So collaborative, existing clavoured siding on the front matching clavoured siding. And then cedar shakes on the rest, the other two walls.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's see, Mr. Delaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick question. So the 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 barn door styling on the front, those are not functional. That's just for a a decorative element to sort of break up the the that wall, because you're using that wall or to to for closet and bathroom in the front of that.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delaw. Mr. Swanton?
No questions from me.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chairman.
Just a comment. I like that barn door. Very cool. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Bennet.
I have no questions.
All right. I I have no questions either. I I too like that barn door. I like the design. I think it's thoughtful. I'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we'll now go into deliberations in that we are deliberating the, a special permit for nonconformities. As this board knows, our deliberations must, we must find as a board that there are no addition, there's no addition through this application of a new nonconformity. We as a board must also find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the pre-existing nonconforming use or structure. And when we make this determination, the board can consider factors such as massing scale, shape, volume, location, and and volume of the proposed structure or addition as compared to the existing structure and as compared to the neighborhood. And that there are no reasonable alternatives. So I, with that in mind, I'll ask the board members to begin deliberations around that criteria. We'll start with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. Off the top, I can say I can support this. This proposal, I I, there's no new nonconformity here encompassed with this addition. The addition is is tasteful, thoughtfully done, down to scale, attention to detail on the height of the roof was made. I mean, obviously, the barn doors are fantastic, but no, it's it's just thoughtfully done. There's no issue with with size, scale, or massing at all, so I can see no way that it would be detrimental to the neighborhood, so I can support it.
Mr. Delaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I would agree with Mr. Moore. That this ticks off the boxes that we need to tick off for our ordinance. I too can support this, and I would also note that there were some, I think, three, three letters of support in the file from from neighbors. So I I can support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Delaw. Mr. Swanton?
I think my colleagues have just said it pretty well. For me, this is an easy one. I can support this.
All right. And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ditto of previous comments, it's a nice, modest addition, tastefully done. A great presentation as well, and who who can't love a barn door on the front of a house? I can support this.
Very good. And Mr. Bennet?
Well, first and foremost, I too like the barn door. So we're in, so we're in unanimous there. Now, this is a fine project. It it meets all the regulatory requirements, and it has my support.
All right, I I share all those sentiments. I had nothing further to add deliberations, other than I feel it's a a well, a well-presented application. It's very reasonable, and I I like it. So with that, I'll close the deliberations portion of the public hearing. And do we have a motion from a member of the ZBA?
I I'll make a motion to approve application, ZNC twenty-one dash three for twenty Lafayette Street special permit.
Thank you. Motion's made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Swanton, calling the role, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delaw?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes, that's five in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries, and the application is approved. Congratulations, and thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Johnston.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're good. Have a good evening. All right, moving to our last public hearing this evening, this is the application of Alfred G. Clifford. The app, the applicant address is one fifty-six State Street. This is a three-part application. Application one is a dimensional variance. The applicant seeks all necessary permits and approvals to allow a ninety ninety-foot of frontage, where a hundred and twenty feet of frontage is required for the construction of a multifamily. At the second component is a special permit for nonconformities. The applicant seeks to demolish a pre-existing nonconforming structure and construct, construct a new four-unit and accessory structure with a nonconforming lot area. And finally, the third part of this application this evening is a special permit, special permit seeking the permit and approvals necessary to allow a multifamily use change to use number one oh three. And with that, we have presenting on behalf of the applicant, both the applicant himself, Mr. Al Clifford, as well as Mr. Christopher or Chris Clifford. And so with that, Mr. and Mr. Clifford, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members, and I'd like to introduce a a very positive and exciting project for Lower State Street. I'd like to thank, first of all, the planning office, Andy, Caitlin, and Jennifer, for their help in putting this project's application together. They were, they're very, very helpful in that regard. The existing building is the Port Sheep Metal Building on State Street. It is a one-and-a-half-story steel cinder block building with a metal fabrication retail use. with a metal fabrication retail use and consists of sixteen thousand seven hundred square feet of land with ninety feet of frontage on State Street. Lot is preexisting, nonconforming. And I, as the applicant, am proposing to remove the retail trade use and the existing nonconforming structure and construct, construct a multifamily structure. The B one zone in which this property is situated allows for multifamily as one of the uses. And the fact that it is a preexisting, nonconforming lot allows that lot to be used for multifamily. The first part of our application for relief. Let me go over, first of all, the existing conditions. The lot area requires twenty thousand square feet where the lot has sixteen thousand seven hundred and sixty four square feet. However, that lot is grandfathered as preexisting, nonconforming and can be used, as I said, for multifamily. The side yard setback requires ten feet in that district. And at the present time, it is two point seven feet. And on the other side is point nine feet. It is slammed right to the lot line. And the rear yard setback, twenty feet is required in that zone. And in this case, the existing building in one corner is encroaching on the neighbor's yard, three point three feet. And in the other corner, two point seven feet in from the lot line. Now, on the upload, some information was was dropped somehow. I'm not exactly sure how that happened. But the required lot coverage of less than or equal to forty percent where the existing coverage is over that at forty four point five percent. The frontage and front setback are conforming in the current condition. The DCOD is not triggered as the existing structure is not of historical significance. Next slide. This shows, this is site plan showing the existing building. The dark outline, basically the rear half of the property. You'll see how it is right on the lot lines at the side and the rear. And constitutes just under seven thousand five hundred square feet of lot coverage. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the existing site. Front elevation. They, it's a story and a half. Inside, there is a a portion of it that is a second story. But being commercial building, it's kind of a convoluted second floor area. Next slide, please. This is the the rear elevation. And as I said, this is right on the butter's lot line. Next slide, please. Another shot of the of the rear part of the building again, directly on the butter's lot line. Next slide. This is the right, existing right elevation. This one's important because the the pitch of the roof is such as you can see being right on the lot line, the pitch of the roof rainwater drainage goes directly off and onto the neighbor's property the way the building currently sits. It can't be avoided and it's a huge roof. It's sheet metal. Next slide, please. Now, the proposed project is to demolish the existing structure and construct a four unit multifamily dwelling with an accessory structure which is a garage for the last unit. Very similar in configuration to one seventy two State Street, just just beyond this going down. If anybody is conversant with that area. We would want to change from retail trade use four oh three to multifamily one oh three, which is allowed in that district. The proposal continues one nonconformity and eliminates four nonconformities while creating no new nonconformities. The nonconformity that's continued is the preexisting lot size that does not change. The lot coverage is improved to forty percent, which is in keeping with the dimensional controls. The rear setback is improved to twenty feet, which complies with the dimensional controls. The side A setback is improved to twenty nine point six feet. And side B is improved to ten point three feet, both exceeding dimensional controls. The parking will be improved with each unit having a two car garage in keeping with the dimensional controls. And the frontage remains at ninety feet where the one twenty is required. Next slide, please. This is the, the, the vision of the finished product. Now, there's a one thing here that's particularly important from an aesthetics point of view. First of all, it's Greek revival in architecture, which is in keeping with that part of State Street. When I say it's in keeping with it, there are a variety of architectures as you go down. There's a couple of Federalists, there's a Colonial, and there's a Greek revival. This blends in very well architecturally. And the front unit, as you can see, is turned so that it faces State Street. Such that as you drive up State Street or drive down State Street, what you will see is in effect a Greek revival house. And the the other three units behind that are not particularly visible unless you look for them. I think this maintains the cityscape. And along with that, the setback from the street has been calculated by the city for us to be in keeping with the setbacks along that side of the street. So in total, I think the aesthetic result of what we propose is going to be very complimentary to the, to the neighborhood. Next slide, please. These are the elevations of the building. If you'll notice, the integral garages between each of the units. Accommodating off-street parking, obviously, and covered parking. The, the height of the building is only twenty excuse me, twenty six feet. And this is in keeping with the area. The buildings on all around this particular site are this height or higher. This building is lower than some of the townhouses that are built beside this and behind it. And in the same manner, they're the same or lower as the new townhouses that were just built on the adjacent lot. Next slide, please. Actually, the, the second slide would, excuse me, one more slide, please. That this is easier to see. This is the, the site plan showing the four units. Also showing where the driveway is and where that accessory building is at the end of the driveway. It also shows a brick sidewalk which we are putting in. And have also a tree in keeping with the city's requirements for a particular type of tree. We are keeping all of the perimeter trees, as you can see, around the edge. Somewhat fortunately, the trees that are there were on the very edge because the building was slammed right to the side of the lot line. So we intend for privacy purposes for both our neighbors and ourselves to keep all of these mature trees. And in fact, we're going to add others to create even more privacy. Next slide, please. Criteria for the special permit for use. The properties located in the, in the business zone where multifamily is allowed by special permit. And it's, it's very important to, to understand that this, this whole area is, when I say whole area, this lower part of State Street on the right as you drive down is, is the majority of the buildings are multifamily. And it is a a grouping of newer townhouse complexes as well as older properties broken up into multifamilies. The the city includes the multifamily use in business, which recognizes that it is appropriate to allow more dense developments in various appropriate properties. The proposed creation of a multifamily dwelling is certainly in keeping with the intent of the ordinance for multifamily use. Now, all units will have more than sufficient parking with each unit containing an attached two car garage. There are sidewalks on State Street on both sides in this location. As a result, there'll be no detrimental impact with regard to traffic or pedestrian safety as a result of the proposed multifamily use on the site. In addition, the property, while located in a business district, is close to the R three district. And the rear lot line abuts a residential district. So the residential context of this change in use is in keeping with the area and will complement what is currently there. In this section of the business district, there is a mixture of single family, two family, multifamily. The proposed use is, is consistent with this neighborhood in general. And it will not, and it will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. In fact, it will enhance it. Because right now, there is a use there which is completely incongruous with all of the properties around it. Next slide, please. Back one slide, back one slide, please. Slide fourteen, slide fourteen, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, next one, please. I'm sorry. Now, with regard to the criteria for the variance relating to the lot frontage. The primary hardship is a nonconforming structure in current use. Eighty-five percent of the parcels on Lower State are residential. And the requested variance can be supported without harm to the intent of the new report zoning ordinance. The irregular shape of the lot due to its large size and the nonconforming structure renders it more conducive to supporting the proposed multifamily, a permitted use. Now, hardship may be found to exist where zoning board appeals finds that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, topography of such land or structures and especially affecting such land or structures. It is important to recognize that a large majority of the parcels on Lower State are also nonconforming for lot frontage. The proposed change will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. And the proposal is entirely consistent with the residential nature of the surrounding properties. Next slide, please. This is if we look at this GIS map, the property in question, one fifty six State Street is at the top. And it shows the ninety feet of frontage. Now, next door to it on the upside is a six unit condominium development. Its frontage is only seventy one feet. As you come down to the next property below one fifty six State Street, there is a pork chop lot with three new townhouses in the back. And it only has thirty two feet of frontage. Going further down the street, two or three is one seventy two State Street, which again has a hundred and eight feet of frontage. So the precedent for the less than one hundred and twenty feet for multifamily is exhibited in these other properties. Some of which are quite recent. And we feel that it will not be detrimental. In fact, it will blend in to the area that surrounds the property. Now, next slide, please. Now, in additional considerations, there is a list of a butter's in support. I sat with sixteen of the twenty on the city of butter's and a butter's to the butter's lists. And received overwhelming support for the project. As the list will show you, I believe have that list. Yeah, it's slide number eighteen. Yes, there we are. Thank you. But just to show you that we have reached out to everybody. And the, the only concern that we've run into at this point is the property to our right, which is a condominium complex. A couple of those folks voiced concern about storm water runoff. Because they are the ones that are next to the existing building where that roof dumps onto their land. Now, of course, we'll be going back to conformance with dimensional controls. So the new building will have the required setbacks from the lot line, both in the rear and the side. And in addition, we are working with John Eric White, the city engineer to come up with the plan. He's, he's putting, helping us put it together for storm water runoff. It will be contained on the site. In other words, the gutters will run into dry wells. And the run, the driveway runoff will be contained with with, with greats catch basins, as it were, that John Eric White has indicated can be conduited directly to the city in the street. Or we can handle it on site. Or we can handle it on-site. The soil types there are exceptionally good. They're sandy. They're very good perp rates. Such that drainage in general is good on that particular, in that particular area. So we have taken steps to ameliorate that situation. And then the oh, the other issue on the side, again, to our right. Again, the same condominium complex. There is an existing fence. And we have, again, in our landscape plan, we are keeping the fences that exist and adding a new one in back. Well, the fitness, the fence that exists on their side is, how shall I say, suboptimal in condition by their own admission. And and ours. And I've met with one of their representatives. And we've agreed to work with them on on reconstructing that fence line. Those were the 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 issues that I had were brought to my attention. On the other side of the property, to our left, the butters are are very much in favor of the entire project. Both the townhouse and back and the single-family house that is on State Street. The I think, Mr. Chairman, that constitutes my presentation. I would direct your attention also to Mr. Jim McCarthy's letter, which is slide nineteen. Which in which he details a support. He is the former chairman of the planning board in Newburyport. And he also is a champion of the Rails End Village Center, which is the nomenclature used for development of the rotary at the end of State Street. And the it's envisioned to become a center in and of itself. And he sees that this is is an asset and a great adjunct to the development of that center. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Anything else before we move along?
Not at this time.
Very good. Thank you for a very thorough and detailed presentation as always. And I will close this portion of the public hearing. And we will go to the public comment section. I'll ask Caitlin to put up the public comment slide as always. And we will go to any any hands and any anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard. And I see, it looks like Jesslyn Sullivan. I will start with you if you want to unmute your mic. And just give your name and address again for the record, and you have the floor.
Good evening. This is Jesslyn Sullivan at one fifty-two State Street, number four. But I'm also joined by Linda Dolmetsch at one fifty-two State Street, Unit One. And I think Linda would like to start if that would be okay.
Okay, I'm Linda Dolmetsch. I live at one fifty-two State Street, Unit One. And I have lived here for almost twenty years, so I'm delighted to speak to this. I want to be very clear that I am not opposed to the request for the variance in terms of demolishing the State Street building and converting to multifamily use. It's certainly not an attractive building, but they have been good neighbors all these years. I am, however, very opposed to the density that's being proposed on that property. And I have some concerns. I have not met with Mr. Clifford and I wish that we had had a presentation to the group in order to understand better. I hear that he's putting a plan together for the stormwater drainage. But that is not done yet. I have concerns about sewage backflow. You know, a number of years ago, maybe five years ago, with three units, because the six units on the side at one fifty-two are two separate buildings with a tremendous amount of land in the back. We had sewage backflow and had to excavate, replace the pipes. And I can't imagine that the sewage pipes next door are any different. So it's the density that I am concerned about in the lack of open space. I'm very happy to hear because I had not a chance to look at the documents that were, I understand, made even more available today. That that there are plans to collaborate with the condo association around the fence. Because screening for the air conditioning units in the back of those buildings does a concern as it faces our bedrooms. I am the president of the condo association and I had no idea that this collaboration was taking place. So I am pleased with that, but certainly would like more of a chance to understand. You know, the keeping of the trees on that side. It's it's interesting because I really thought many of those trees were on our property line. So I'd like the chance to continue to discuss this before any variance for four units is granted. I do oppose that. I think this property would be much better with three to preserve some more of the open space. Thank you for the chance to speak.
And may I follow up with that? Again, this is Jesslyn Sullivan.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. My unit is actually in the back. And mine is one that not only faces this new complex from the front, but also from my deck. So I was I was heartened to hear Mr. Mr. Clifford indicate that he wanted to optimize the trees. I'm hoping that there could be maybe some more effort put into something, maybe some conifers or something to provide some some better privacy. So that would be a concern of mine. And and I'm hoping that we can have some good conversation about that. To Linda's point about Rails End and the the density, I am equally concerned, not just from the standpoint of the property next to us having four units. But it's just the neighborhood in general is getting very, very dense. And to the point that Mr. Clifford raised about one seventy-two State, it is a good way to get a benchmark for what this is ultimately going to to look like. Certainly, the design is appealing enough. But the density, when you see one seventy-two State Street, it is surprisingly dense. I was very surprised. I remember when that was first built. And I've heard a lot of anecdotal comments about it over the past year or two since that went up. I do want to follow up just a little bit with that conversation about the the runoff. We did have, we did some regrading of our driveway and parking lot a couple of years ago. And we did contemplate putting in hardtop. And we had some engineers look at it, and they did voice some concerns and indicated that we had a lot of work to do relative to putting in dry wells and so forth. The concern that they brought up was not about the runoff from the the roof of Port Sheet Metal. So I was kind of surprised to hear that that was the cause of it. But in any event, I'm glad that it is being addressed. I look forward to seeing more information on that. And I would like to know at some point in time how we how that would actually be monitored to make sure that in the development that that in fact was all being taken care of. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Very good. Was that 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 was, there was no further comments, Ms. Sullivan? I just want to make sure we.
That's that's all from Linda and myself, yes.
Very good. Thank you both. Any further comments? Just kindly raise your virtual hand. I see Edmund Latamy and Roy Bean. I'll recognize Edmund Latamy first. And if you could unmute your mic, bottom left, and just give your full name and address, and you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, I'm Edmund Latamy with my wife Holly Latamy. We're owners of one fifty-two State Street, Unit Five. It's one of the ones in the back. And as was said earlier, we're not against the the plan. But we have two two comments or concerns. One, you've heard, is the stormwater drainage. The planned development includes four houses, four two-car garages, along with patios and a large driveway, which results in what seems to be almost no grass or dirt for drainage. So we were pleased to receive today a copy of a memo from city engineered Mr. White, which focused on the recent report, has been mentioned by Mr. Clifford, that would suggest that roof downspout drains into basins. And given the major driveway would require one to two large catch basins and perhaps piping into the city sewer. This is going to be critical, especially with that density. And we would hope that these remedies would be required rather than recommended. And if they're insufficient, that a fallback would be mandated. Another potential remedy would be to reduce the number of houses to two or three with resultant increased land for drainage. Our second concern has to do with privacy, which has also been raised by one of our neighbors. And given the short distance between the rear of the new houses and the front of some of our houses, rear windows of new houses will end up looking right into the upper floors of one of at least three of our houses and overlook the property. I was pleased that Mr. Clifford just mentioned this, but as has been mentioned by one of our neighbors, we're really concerned about trees or some kind of other shielding because of that. The other related one is noise. And the assumption is that there are air conditioning units all along the rear. And so that kind of shielding that would in that would block that would also be preferable. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Latamy and Mr. Roy Bean.
Yes, my name is Roy Bean and I am at one sixty-two State Street, Unit One. And I also have with me Kim Lively, who is one sixty-two State Street, Unit Three. I guess I'll start with my first comment that I hate to do this to contradict on my first opening comment, but I did meet with Mr. Clifford when he came around and that document that he displayed for us tonight that talked about our strong support, especially coming from one sixty-two State Street, who is the butter to the southwest and to the left of the property if we're looking at the property. Our understanding is that we were signing that, or I was signing that document as an acknowledgement that he had spoken to us, not necessarily our approval. So I'll start with that. Not saying I'm outright against the the proposal, but that was certainly was not as I was not signing my name to anything to that extent. My concerns are regarding, as has mentioned, the stormwater runoff, snow melt. We're on the side with looking at this proposal with the driveway, which is extremely close to the our property line as it runs down. Not leaving a lot of place for snow melt, for plowing, as well as obviously, an impervious permeable surface of asphalt on the plants could create water runoff. I heard about the catch basins, but it also mentioned that could be tied to the city to the street runoff or to the streets system to take away the water versus actually tied to the street. I guess I would be more inclined to support it if it was actually tied to the street as opposed to just could be tied to the street. The other piece of this is that due to obviously the density of the four units, these units, and especially the fourth one, is looking essentially right towards our property. And we lose quite a bit of privacy. The building that's there, albeit not very attractive, is extremely low and almost nonexistent. All we see is roofs. When this is done, we will see windows and lights and people's houses directly into our driveway. Because of the small space next to the driveway on this plan, I don't believe there's a lot of room for trees in that area. And most of the trees that are on the site plan that Mr. Clifford showed us are actually off of the property, as was also, I believe, mentioned by the folks over on one fifty-two, that most of the trees are off of that property. So it sounds like there's very few trees, obviously, given the existing structure that's there that goes right up to the property lines. There's no room for trees anywhere around this thing. So they must be on the butters' properties as opposed to proposed in this plan. So I'll defer to Kim.
I do have some concerns about the height of the back building. It's seems like there will be third story living on that part of the on that fourth structure. And that directly looks into my backyard. And some of the other, I think the third, would look directly into my bedroom window. So I definitely have concerns about privacy. And as mentioned before, I don't want to overstate, but the the drain water and the stormwater runoff is a is a is a definite concern. As is the density of the proposed buildings. And that is that's about it. That's those are my major concerns. And I'm not opposed to this at all as well. I think it'll be a nice addition to our street if done correctly.
And I guess I'll, again, this is Roy Bean. I'll add one more comment just for maybe clarification on Mr. Clifford's side. Looking at the plans, it looks like the the last building that that Kim was referring to has a height on the plans of twenty-nine feet, eight inches, slightly different than Mr. Clifford's comment of twenty-six feet as the height.
Very good. Was there anything else, Mr. Bean?
No, I think that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Bean and Ms. Lively for your your comments as well. And with that, we will looks like there's one final hand raised, though if you wish to raise your hand, feel free. I'll continue to recognize them. But we have Cory and Tammy. That's just the name listed. Cory and Tammy, if you could unmute your mic, you have the floor. If you wouldn't mind kindly give your first and last name and your address for our.
I want to make sure. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you now, yes.
Okay, my name is Cory Prince. I'm here with my wife Tammy. We live in one fifty-two State, Unit Number Three. Unit Number Three, just for some reference, is one that directly faces pretty much the middle of the lot, which this proposal is being applied to. You know, first and foremost, I do want to thank the board for the opportunity to meet. I know this is late in the agenda and late in the evening. So thank you for that. I do want to echo, it seems to be a repeated topic across pretty much everybody who's speaking. But a few core things, one of which is, you know, there's discussions about the density. And we absolutely share that concern. You know, we have children bedrooms at the front of our unit, which would basically be parallel with potential height of this proposed multifamily. One thing that's important to also acknowledge here is that is if I interpreted the plans correctly, while they are designed in kind of a Greek revival style, there is a persistent ridge line. This ridge line is approximately, I think, about nine feet over the current structure and basically run the course of all the proposed units. So it, while this doesn't have any kind of architectural variance to be able to provide different angles and different views, this, you know, from from an abutter side, this will look as one formidable building that is just long. A couple of additional things, too. There's been a lot of comments about kind of the drainage. And one thing that I haven't seen in the proposal, and I know there's discussions about working through drainage with the town. But for those who have been to Port Sheet Metal, it's actually that. But for those who have been to Port Sheep Metal, it's actually that building actually sits below grade. So I haven't seen anything that is really addressed. I haven't measured these things, but if I were to estimate, it's probably at least a foot or two below grade off the street. So that's going to change the topography of the land while we talk about what the current runoff state is. Building up that land to accommodate street level is going to change the conditions of that lot. So when we look at that, we really need to have an understanding of what that plan is going to be. Not only how they're going to build up that space to be able to support the structures, but also what kind of environmental and drainage conditions are going to be imposed as a result of that. And then lastly, I would just talk about, you know, and again, this has been phrased multiple times, it's just privacy concerns. You know, we are ones that literally would be looking right into the back. I think there's maybe 25 feet of space that would be from one of our kids' windows to the back window of one of these spots. So it's very important that we have privacy concerns taken into consideration. I think that's it.
Very good. And you had mentioned your your wife Tammy was with you.
Yes.
Sure, I would just add that I I echo my husband's comments and everybody from from an abutter standpoint. And just think, you know, potentially a plan that that I'm not opposed to this. Again, I agree. It looks a lot better than than the Port Sheep building. Having said that, I do want to make sure that when we talk about its construct within the the district and the area, that it doesn't become a monstrous piece, but rather something that does sort of fit nicely. And I certainly think that can be done with three units rather than four.
Very good. Thank you very much for your comments and were there any, was there anyone else who wished to speak before I close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board? Seeing no additional hands, going once, going twice. I'll go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing and we will jump into our next segment, which is questions from the board. We'll begin in questions with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chairman. My first question is going to go to the heart of the drainage issues that seem to to be a big part of the concerns of the abutters here. And we noted from our from our notes that the project has preliminarily been reviewed by by the city engineer and you're working closely with him. You're going to be required to apply for stormwater management permit. We've been, it's been recommended that that we require, should this go forward, that we require you to submit to the city engineer a grading design for parking, walkways and driveway for approval prior to issuing a building permit. Would this be something, is this something that you're aware of, is something you're working towards? I just wanted to hear your comment on that.
Yes, we are aware of that and that is going to be part of the process before, of course, we get any building permit. That would have to be accomplished.
And and with respect to the the trees, which we're all going to be maintained and and perhaps added for for privacy. Along the side of the driveway, there's been a concern that with obviously it's it's going to cause runoff because it's it's covered with with asphalt. But just installing a driveway, it's also been recommended that we find a way to make sure that you are consulting with experts, arborists, that, you know, installing and clearing the ground, grading it properly, installing a driveway this way wouldn't actually harm the trees. I know your intent is to keep them, but is that something that you've been made aware of and something that you would be opposed to? If we required that.
We've been made aware of that and we are not opposed to doing that.
Excellent. And I just, I'll just do one more, I have one more question. It's on the back unit that has the looks at the third floor bump out that's that's higher than everything else. I assume that's to make up for the lost space because you don't have the space over the two car garage at the end of the building.
That is correct.
What is the the square footage difference, I guess, with that bump out? What I guess, what what square footage does that add to that that last unit and what would be lost if that that top piece was gone?
It adds about 400 square feet, so the differential would be about 400.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dela.
I'm going to suggest something. I've never done this before, but I'm going to suggest that based on the presentation and the detail with which the information was provided. The the comments from the abutters. That there's just a lot to unpack here. And considering the lateness of the hour, I don't think that we're going to really get through the this whole thing tonight. So I would just, I would suggest that we continue this till to another night and give the board time to sort of digest what we heard tonight. Ask questions of the people in the planning office, because it just seems like there's an awful lot to unpack here. And I don't, I don't want to rush through and and not give these various issues the attention that they deserve. So I think that's sort of what I would, what I would think, what I'm thinking at this point. And if if the other board members disagree that, you know, that's fine, we'll soldier on. But I I think that there's just an awful lot to address here at this late hour.
Okay, all right, Mr. Dela, let's take a moment as we go through the questions. Let me, let me just spin through the rest of the board and and just take a poll for a moment on thinking in terms of, you know, in terms of, you know, availability of time, attention bandwidth and just getting the best, you know, the best absorption rate for all of us. But let's see what what everyone else thinks with respect to your comments. And we'll circle right back. Mr. Swanton. Your thoughts on on whether to proceed or and continue to, as Mr. Dela says, unpack the details or whether we we allow ourselves some time to digest, absorb and revisit this fresh in some manner?
Well, I have a lot of questions and it's almost 11 o'clock. And in order to do this correctly, I just, I I concur completely with my colleague, Mr. Delisle.
Okay, let's start with just that, because I have questions as well, and I suspect I'm not alone in this, but there may well be answers to those questions, but there's a lot, there's a lot going on here for sure. Mr. Mr. Chandler, I'm sorry, Mr. Swanton.
That was me.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chandler.
Yeah, I I think I think we'd be best served if we could spend a little bit more time on this. I think we're all going to have questions and I think I think since we're unpacking, you know, three different applications here. I I think to to do this fairly, some more time is warranted. I agree.
All right, and Mr. And thank you, Mr. Chandler. Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay. So with that, let me press pause for a moment on the questions from the board segment and go to our applicant, Mr. Clifford. You've heard the the comments of the board. I I have to say that in fairness, you know, notwithstanding the hour, there are three very technical matters before us, one of which is extraordinarily technical and and, you know, steeped deeply in the mire of the legal criteria of of hardship, and that's the variance application. In light of what we've heard from the public and in light of what we have before us. What are your thoughts on a continuance to allow the board time to digest, formulate questions? Be in a position to maybe adapt questions, maybe give you time to have conversations, if that's something you're inclined to do with the the some of the abutters from whom you've heard or not. But either way, what what are your thoughts on a continuance on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I I don't, I don't object to the continuance. However, it would be very helpful to me if the board, the remainder of the board were to ask, by asking questions, it gives us a a better idea of what we need to concentrate on. And your first member has asked some questions. It would be helpful if perhaps some of the other members could at least put forth a couple of questions.
Well, I can certainly, I can certainly invite them to do that. You know, obviously, we understand that we can't in a, we can't really proceed in a vacuum, so I just would caution your expectation perhaps and respectfully so that, you know, the questions will lead to additional questions for sure. So I know that they won't be exhaustive. So with that in mind, I'm happy to spin back to to my colleagues. But I think that my sense of it is that to, you know, the best possible approach in fairness to to your application, to you as an applicant and to all of the abutters concerns and to, you know, the members of the board is to try to, you know, let everyone have a moment to digest a lot of what's happening. But let's go back to the questions so that if that's in the cards, we part company here this evening with, you know, with with you having a sense of what what were the highlights of things that were concerning and alarming or or, you know, or or well done, etc. So I will.
I think that's what we're looking for is a sense.
I I will, I will leave it to each board member as to whether, you know, how how deep into the questions they want to commit to. But certainly we'll invite them to to offer what what they might have. Mr. Swanton, you had mentioned you had a few questions. Anything that would be valuable to share with with Mr. Mr. And Mr. Clifford on, you know, if they're to, if they're to take a step back and a pause on a continuance?
Well, Mr. Chairman, you made an excellent point that sometimes you ask a question and then that leads to another question, another question, another question. So I'll just give you two categories. But I might might want to probe down. And one question might have led to the next, since I do not want to get into a debate here. I'd like to move on. But my categories, one is around the variance. You already mentioned yourself that is a pretty high bar for us. And particularly when a lot of the abutters are have have the issues. And it's, you know, what are the criteria for variance here? Where is the hardship? I'd like to probe that. Another area I'd like to probe is density. We certainly heard that from an awful lot of the neighborhood density here. And does it need to be four units? You know, it is not, it's not a very big lot compared to them in the lot that a lot of these people spoke on. Yeah, they have six units, but the lot's three and a half times as big. So I mean, this is a really small lot compared to theirs and some of the other ones. So I was going to probe there as well. Anyway, those are my, those are my general categories. I I may come up with some more. And sometimes when I listen to my colleagues ask questions, I come up with others. But anyway, to give you some things to think about.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Let's, let's, let's go to Mr. Chandler.
Yeah, I guess like Mr. Swanton, my questions would be around the variance. I think the other two applications I understand pretty well and 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 probably are on board. But with the variance, as stated, it's a little bit of a higher bar. You know, trying to come up with, you know, the bullets that makes sense where there's a hardship. And, you know, one of the other criteria is if if we don't agree with the variance, he wouldn't have, you know, use of the lot. That's, that's another high high bar, at least in my mind. So my questions would be around that, trying to solve the the variance issues. Because obviously, that's that's one of the the prime objectives for them to to be able to use this lot is to have, you know, the variance go through. So I I would spend most of my time asking questions about that and discussing it.
Very good. And I will circle back to you, Mr. Delisle, before we 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 move on. But Mr. Bennet, I wanted to just get your thoughts very quickly.
Yeah, I I would, that would be interesting. And following up on those very same issues, also some of the, what I'll call the softer kind of good neighbor issues that the neighbors have raised as well. As you said, there, there's a lot to think about and I think we need to reflect on all those issues.
Thank you. And Mr. Delile, anything, obviously, you you had, it was your, you had instigated the us to reflect on this. So I didn't want to short circuit whether or not you had formulated any questions yet or whether it's still too premature.
No, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I I would say that, you know, my questions would have revolved around the same sort of issues that were raised by my colleagues, the variant, the density, the the stormwater management issues. I think that those are, those are the critical pieces here. I think one, one comment from one of the abutters that that struck me was the sort of the length of the building and the length of the ridgeline itself. And I think that goes probably to the density issue as well. But I think those are the the things that Mr. Clifford that that I would ask questions about and and would be the the issues that you know, would, in my opinion, merit some reflection.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Clifford, I, you know, and and just to round things out, my sense of it would be, I I think what what I'm hearing are the principal questions and categories are, you know, what about the hardship if I'm to just kind of summarize them? Why so dense and and what about neighbor concerns? So these are sort of the the big, the big picture, you know, the the big picture items, perhaps. I I know that these are far more granular and in fairness to the questions. I'm sure there, there's going to be more questions spawned by us unpacking or attempting to unpack those questions. But I I share those sentiments and I I think that it's probably not an, you know, an unwise endeavor to try to drill down some of those issues and see if 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 there's a way to provide some time for the board, but also perhaps see what if any of the concerns you heard from others, you know, are easily addressed or solvable, if at all. But I want to give you the opportunity to ask us if it's in, you know, if it's something you're willing to or interested in doing to, if you want to continue the matter, we would certainly be inclined to to do that and allow time for all to try to get a better, you know, a better grapple on everything.
Sure. And Mr. Chairman, I would like to request a continuance.
Okay, and I think.
What are my options?
I think we have, well, we have space to, let me, let me see. Caitlin, what I I would want us to have, I I don't want to put Mr. Clifford's application on a on a night that we have, you know, more than a few substantive applications on, because I think, well, I don't want us to run into the same situation. What, what does the calendar look like beyond? I mean, I think that the meeting of December 14th, we had just moved one application. What does that hearing look like?
December 14th is extremely full, but we off, we always put the continuances on first before new applications. So this agenda item would go third.
What, how many applications are on on the 14th?
So the 14th, so we'll have three continuances and three new applications.
Yeah, that that makes for a 1:00 AM.
Yeah.
I I'm afraid we can't do that.
And then the 12:28 meeting, it looks like we have three new applications.
Not no continuance is three new?
That's right.
Are there any members that are not expected to be able to attend 12:28? Everyone, every, can anyone not attend? I'll just ask in the negative. No? Okay, so if we can all be there 12:28, Mr. Clifford, how does 12:28, you would be first out as a continuance? And it would, it would punish us to to dire, too direly with with three new applications right behind you.
Sounds good.
All right. So do we have a motion from the board on the applicant's request to continue to the hearing of 12:28?
So move, Ken Swanton.
Thank you.
Second, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Motion's made and seconded by Mr. Swanton and Mr. Moore on the applicant's request to continue this, all three of the applications to the hearing date of December 28th. Calling the roll on the motion, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delile.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chandler.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes. That's 60 affirmative. Eyes have it, motion carries and all three matters are continued to the hearing of 12:28. Thank you to those that stuck it out to to share your. Thank you to those that stuck it out to to share your thoughts as members of, you know, abutters or. Just members of the neighborhood or the public and to Mr. Clifford and Mr. Clifford. Thank you for your patience and your flexibility. So we'll see you on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, members of the ZDA, we we now have arrived at the end of our public hearings. We'll close the portion of the public hearing section of our meeting and move into our business meeting where we have one matter on. For our attention, which is the approval of the minutes of November ninth, twenty twenty-one. I was absent for that hearing, so. I I won't have any thoughts or comments on it, but does anyone wish to make any comments, corrections? Or in the absence of that, does anyone wish to make a motion to approve?
I will approve the minutes, Ken Swanton. Second, Mark Moore.
It's made and seconded by Mr. Swanton and Mr. Moore to approve the minutes, calling the roll on the approval of the minutes, Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
I wasn't at that hearing either.
Mr. Bennet and I will, will, will. Will defer, so we have four in the affirmative. The eyes have it, the motion carries, the minutes are approved. Thank you, thank you, Gretchen. For always keeping great minutes. So we have a certificate of vote, which we 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 will be pushing off. It's not quite ready yet. On advice of of Caitlin Sullivan and the planning office. That document will be presented to us likely at the next meeting and if not, then by the twenty-eighth for our consideration. Or our electronic signature, but our our vote to to sign it. I have no further updates and I just want to thank you all. It's it's been a late evening, a lot of work. Thank you, Caitlin. Thank you, Gretchen. And thank you all for for hanging in there. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye. Guys have it. All right, have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.